Good evening. I'm Peter Caruso, Town Administrator. I'm gonna bring this meeting to order until it's reorganized in a few minutes. So I'm calling the meeting to order Monday, April 8th, 2024, the Board of Selectmen. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. If people could stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Thank you. I'm gonna take the agenda out of order for just a little bit. I'm gonna start with item four, the reorganization of Board of Selectmen. Before we do that, if folks at the table could introduce themselves, and again, I'm Peter Caruso, Town Administrator.
Joe Baker, Selectman.
Matthew Mealy, Selectman.
Richard Bremmels, Selectman.
Andrew Allward, Selectman.
Jennifer Gillis, Selectman.
Great, thanks. Okay, so I'll take nomination for Chair of the Board of Selectmen for this upcoming year. I welcome nominations. I welcome volunteers.
Joe's pretty quiet over there. Try again next year. Let me get used to it first.
I'll nominate Jennifer Gill to be Chair.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, what's been moved in second? Did any discussion? Take a vote? We'll take a roll call vote. Matthew?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Okay, great. The gavel is yours, Madam Chair.
Alright, I feel so powerful. Um, I guess that's gonna be Vice Chair? I guess maybe, I don't know if we should have a discussion first, because I was like, no one was smart, I didn't know if Andrew wanted to be Chair. Andrew, would you like to be Vice? Does anyone want to be Vice Chair? I was gonna nominate Andrew. This is awkward. I will make a nomination for Andrew Allward to be Vice Chair.
You wanna nominate me?
Yeah, I was gonna nominate you.
Okay.
Do you wanna turn?
Sure.
I withdraw my nomination?
I'll nominate Richard to be Vice Chair of the Board of Selectmen.
I will second. Any discussion?
Better than Secretary.
Well, we know who's gonna be the Secretary. Matthew?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Well, congratulations, Richard. A new position.
Now I'm very powerful.
Can I get my own gavel? We can get you a gavel.
Oh, you have two?
We can get you a gavel. It can happen. And I will make, I will make a motion to nominate Joe Baker as Secretary.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Throw right into the fire, sure.
Honestly, it's good to learn, like, to take the notes and stuff, and if you need help, I'll help you. I was doing it with.
Alright, sure.
You can have a gavel at home.
Okay.
But he doesn't, just to clarify, well, you vote him in, but we'll clarify what the role is as Secretary, right?
Yeah.
It's a lot of work, long nights, hard hours.
No.
Don't listen to them. Alright, so second, so any further discussion?
No.
Seeing an hour call for the vote. Matthew?
Aye.
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
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 Okay.
So you don't take the minutes of these meetings, so they're recorded, we have somebody to do that, but you would take the minutes of executive session?
No.
Okay. And sign things as clerk or secretary as necessary.
Okay, and the Finance, can you, Claude, do you have a quorum that you need to call to order? No? Okay. Okay. So five, a new business. So we have consideration appointment of Richard J. Bremmels as Tree Warden until the next election.
So can I dive into this for a moment?
Yes.
Because there's gotta be a lot of confusion about this. So as you folks saw on the ballot, there was a lot of open positions. There's, there's two of us. Different names, by the way, different middle initials. So actually, that's my father running, and they didn't take that into consideration. You just saw the same name multiple times on the results, but because there's no place to put an address, and nobody looked at the middle name being different, folks assumed it was one and the same, but, but it's not. So Diane reached out to the Board of Elections, there was some clarification, and they felt that having him come up and speak and then doing a vote was probably the cleanest way until the next election, because it was a write-in, so.
Okay.
Do you wanna call him up, I guess?
Yeah, I don't know if he wants to come up. And then also, the person who was the Tree Warden last year also said that they would be interested in having their position as well. So we actually have a choice, which is not always the case in Millville.
And I think the election was tied for Tree Warden between two folks, and he had the second place. And I don't recall seeing, just for clarity, I don't recall seeing the Tree Warden on the ballot at all, even as a write-in. Not that it hasn't.
Nobody ran.
Nobody ran, but nobody wrote him in either. So it's not that it really has any weight, but just point of clarification.
But if I could just clarify, because I was privy to a little bit of that back and forth with the town clerk and what she did. It's not clear, like, what you're doing tonight is not, in lieu of whatever happened at the election, there was an absence to elect, or, you know, an inability to elect a person to that position. So tonight, you as the Board of Selectmen, appoint someone to both these two open positions for which there was a failure to elect. I think that's the correct term. And so, until the next election is what you're doing.
And the folks that were tied haven't expressed any interest in it?
No, there's only been the two folks now that, you know, your dad, the better-looking gentleman in the family, the Bremmels family.
He's got a better beard, you know.
Yeah, and, and.
A little more hair.
Yeah, a little more hair.
I've got a little bit less.
I can relate.
The Board of Selectmen has nothing to do with my hair loss.
It has all to do with mine. But so anyway, that's all. And, and so the fellow that was doing it, who opted not to run for election, has resurfaced apparently and expressed his interest, and I understand he's, you know, he was pretty good at it when he was doing it.
So I know your history, but do you wanna go into a little bit of it, what you did for your career?
Originally, I used to work for a power line company called Asplin Tree during the 70s, and when the Arab embargo came, I went on my own and got a Forester Harvesters license, did large properties for 25 years. And after that, I did estates, you know, besides in-between doing roadways, ponds, house lots, stuff like that. That's what I did for a living, for all my years.
And quarries.
So that's what I did. So I do have some experience on what, you know, the towns expect on the trees, on the streets, and stuff like that, and people's yards. I know all the laws. I had a harvesters license for a long time, so I had to take a test every year. I don't know if you're aware of that or not, the Board. But I don't do it anymore. I just figured I'd come out and help. I saw the opening and put the name down, but there was no place to put the street address. They couldn't distinguish.
Yeah.
That's my history.
And no one tree looks alike, right?
No, no. Now, believe it or not, in Massachusetts, all the trees change by counties. There's not the same bunch of trees in one county compared to another county. And that's what I found out doing forestry work.
So Peter, question. So this role, normally elected, but tonight would be appointed until the next election, has a small budget. Do we expect the Tree Warden to be doing any manual labor, cutting the trees or in that nature?
Yes, so typically, the Tree Warden, and Chief Coop can, is here tonight, I'm sure he can verify or by a nod of his head even. But in the past, Tree Wardens called at all hours of the day. If there's a storm and a tree goes down the middle of the road, you're, the towns finest often try to move it. And they have situations where the tree's too large for the two police officers to move it, so they call the Tree Warden. The Tree Warden goes out and trims it up enough so, and helps the officers who still move the pieces of the tree off the road. Separately, the Tree Warden, you know, manages the use of the outside service providers, but more often is called on at odd hours to respond. And so when the former Tree Warden first got involved, he, he was often borrowing equipment from the Highway Department, and we found money for him to buy a souped-up, you know, saw, frankly. I don't know what it was, but, you know, it was, you know, more than you get at Home Depot. And so he, he was able to go out and not have to go to the Highway Department or whatever to get the equipment he needed to go out. And I don't know if Chief Coop would, are there other situations that the Tree Warden, like you, you, I remember we had that Ironstone Street tree down, circled with wires and all that thing, and he was active on that deal, I think.
He was. He helped us get a driveway open for a resident over there so they could have access to their house, because, you know, the electric company was tied up and such. He's also been pretty active in helping with some flooding we had. He's a physical kid, and he's like going into the cleaning.
That's a real risk, I would say.
What's, what's the budget?
So it's 10 grand for outside service providers. I think there's $1,000 stipend there, maybe some nominal other money. All of the, this year's budget's been utilized, but there remains about eight grand of the ARPA money. The Board had approved 30 grand of ARPA money, which he used 22 grand of it so far. And I know you'll come to me asking about the budget about three months ago, or back in, I think it was one of the December, January storms, and there were, you know, some trees about to go, and the question is, the Tree Warden would have to assess whether it's a town, a town tree, or a private tree. If it's a town tree, then we gotta worry about, and the Tree Warden makes the assessment of the potential risk of not taking a tree down. And in that time, the budget was utilized, and we weren't clear on what ARPA money was available. So there was a delay in addressing a potential situation.
Final question I have is insurance coverage, where the town is self-insured. How does that impact a Tree Warden that's doing manual labor for the town, on behalf of the town?
Yeah, so the Tree Warden, I think, would not be providing health insurance, but to the extent there's accident or things like that.
Lot of damage, physical injury.
Yeah, the town's, you're covered, you know. Be functioning as if an employee functioning.
Okay. Is that something I have any interest in, or?
Oh, yes. But the other thing is, the town of Millville does not have scenic roads, correct?
I don't know. I've not heard of the town of Millville having scenic roads, and I don't believe we do, and I don't think we have anything in the zoning, correct?
The, as far as I understand, from taking the harvesters and stuff, if there is a stone wall or a fence between the tree and the asphalt of the street-town road, that tree belongs to the landowner.
Right.
And you don't, unless it falls out on the street. I don't know if you people have distinguished between that or not.
We do assess the right, town's right of way, if you will. So beyond the asphalt, it comes into the factor of determining whether it's a town tree or not. Yes. And that, we depend mostly on the Highway Surveyor, who has the knowledge of the rights of way.
Okay. That answers that.
So, any other questions?
Where is the other guy who didn't want to do this time, but now wants to? Did he, was he notified of this meeting?
He just reached out to me on my Facebook, Selectmen Facebook account.
Should we, out of, you know, should we just ask him to come to a meeting to consider the options? I don't know.
Take a vote for a later time?
Yeah.
That's what you wanna do?
Yeah, if there's multiple candidates, I feel like we should give them a fair chance, even if he didn't want to run this time, but.
Okay. Okay. So we can do that, put them in the next meeting?
Okay, yep.
By.
You want, we're going to be?
Yeah, going to be. But I think for, I didn't have anyone contacting me about Constable until next election. I think we have one spot and one person who would like it.
And just for clarification, we have two positions of Constable in this town. I presently occupy one, and there's supposed to be another open position, so. And him being retired and in town may have a bit more, you know, availability where I am not always available, so.
And you've done a fine job, I must say.
I, yeah, I like doing it. I don't have any, I don't have to continue.
It's really, you get called by the town clerk, and it's really posting warrants and things like that, that are required to be posted in the half dozen places.
Yeah, and this town is, this town is unpaid. And just for clarification, you know, so Constables do have some civil enforcement that does, you know, lie a little bit with a gray, or where there is some criminal, you know, possibilities, but those are things that, you know, we may make advisement on or refer to the Police Department on, so. Things that, mainly it's just posting the notices.
But you might get called by the Sheriff's Department to do something, correct?
On occasion.
To serve something and whatnot.
But the sheriffs also have Constables with powers of arrest, too. And so oftentimes, they'll do their own work, where, you know, a resident may call to have a letter delivered here, and then, you know, Constable may take that.
Right.
If they need assistance, you know, they'll call the Police Department and let them know that they'll be going down. For the most part, it's just a town warrant, so. Which are unpaid.
I know my predecessor used the Constable to deliver communications on a frequent basis. I, I, I don't, haven't had the need to do that, other than once, early on.
We've had one call in the recent months for a possible arrest, but.
Yep.
Yeah.
Sounds exciting.
Yes, it was invigorating. I really need my own taser. Is that the budget?
Um, okay, well, I'm, oh, do you wanna make something?
Yeah. So I'll make the appointment for, of Richard J. Bremmels as Constable until the next election.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Matthew.
And I assume I'll abstain. Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing an hour call for the vote. Matthew?
Aye.
Richard?
Abstain.
Andrew?
Aye.
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 Alright.
Well, congratulations, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hold off on the baton.
Yep.
We'll let you know if you can get a taser.
I'll borrow my wife's.
He wouldn't have to come to the next meeting, because you met him this evening, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That sounds good. I mean, you're always welcome to come to meetings.
Yes, I understand. Thank you.
Okay.
You can go home now.
It's a date night.
Or you can stay.
Bedtime. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So we're gonna move annual town meeting planning with moderator to the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay. And then budget discussions with departments. I don't see Mr. Maule on, yeah, so we can have BMR come up to the table? You don't have to if you don't want to, but we'll be going over your budget. Okay.
So Jason, you may not have handouts, but I'm gonna hand out the little packet that you'd sent me back a few weeks ago. So you have yours, chair. It's just the, it's a complicated thing, but it shows the revenue.
Thank you.
So I went to the budget meeting, I think me and you were there, and Matthew was there.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I'm pretty familiar with it, but I'll know if Richard, Andrew, or Joe, you may have questions on this whole budget. I know this has been whittling it down, so.
I actually did have a question I didn't ask at the last meeting. Regarding terms of revenue for individuals, I asked BBT this when they came. Just looking at athletic and music user fees, do you know what the user fee for each of those is roughly?
Yeah, so we have a family cap of 600, so no family can pay any more than that. It's typically 200 a sport, or 200 a season for music, but football is a little bit more expensive. Football is about $350 because of all the equipment and things, but it's approximately 200.
So we're continuing with the three-school model for this upcoming year, as it is right now, and you have a modest increase?
Yeah, so it's interesting, the overall budget actually decreased from last, from our current fiscal year by about $150,000. Where our budget process started, we came in a little over 30 million. We landed a little less than what we have now, which is about a $2.5 million cut, which includes the non-renewals and layoffs of about 18 staff, full-time staff. So with all of that, we, our budget came in for next year about $150,000 lower than FY '24.
Okay.
And you did whittle away aggressively, I must say. You went through numerous passes on this budget, and Dr. DeFalco kept us pretty well informed on, you know, from where I sat, and met with also Claude Ad back there from FinCom. We got to go to your hearings, and you went through things pretty clearly. So here we are. And your budget now, that you're gonna, you know, the model that I've sent you includes the, not the guidance as the amount and the deficit, but the full ask of the, you know, BMR is now showing there, so you see that. Okay. And the, the minimum local contribution, which is used to assess the largest portion of the balance that's due to be paid by the towns, works in Millville's favor. And we've mentioned that before, but it's worth mentioning again, just because we're classified under, you know, as the poorer town, if you will, and so it benefits the town. We, we pay, under this budget, 185,000 less than we would have paid if it was purely based on enrollments. And likewise, Blackstone picks up 185 of costs under that situation.
And with that, Peter, the minimum local contribution went up 134,0626 from last year to this year.
Yep, they raised it up, yep. And the capital is about the same, and that includes, something went away, but something came in a little bit. We don't have the, have to deal with the asbestos challenge that we had last year. We do have their OPEB piece, our share of the OPEB is in our budget. They've provided a warrant article for that, and it's just consistent with last year. If the voters approve the budget with the OPEB in there, we won't need that warrant article. But we have the wording, and it's in the warrant.
Also, just because you mentioned capital, in September, we'll make our last payment on the middle school.
That's Brian coming in, I suspect, yeah.
So we're still doing the school.
And so when they use exclusionary, that really is transportation in this schedule, right? And so the minimum local contribution is what the state says, and it's the transportation, and the remaining balance is split based on enrollments, just so people understand the mechanics of this. And capital separately, that's a debt exclusion, so we treat that separately. And I see you have a couple of folks here, including a new face, Jason, if you wanted to introduce the new face. This is an important new face.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to do that. Do you wanna join us, Joe, for a few minutes? This is Joseph Spagna. He is our new Director of Finance and Operations.
Hello.
So we're excited to have Joe. Joe's joining us with about 10 years of school business official experience from Rhode Island, and was an auditor before that.
Absolutely, yes.
So lots of, lots of experience in our, in our realm.
Little new system to dig, to go through with Massachusetts. It's a little different than Rhode Island, but we're getting there.
So one question I had, and Peter, I don't know if this is just, because it says 3770087 on our budget, and here it says 3711455. Which one?
That's last year.
Okay, but so where's this year's?
So this year, it's the, it's the combination. I'm off a little bit by four, because I used the last one. It's still in the model. But it's the, if you summarize, the minimum local contribution, the exclusionary, and the additional, that's what's the line item in our, in our budget model.
Okay.
Okay? And then the capital is down in the debt line, which is one of the last lines of our budget model. And separately, we show the OPEB as a separate line.
Yep.
In the BMR section.
Yep, and in our budget, too. Oh, okay, so I'm looking for 3744 then.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right. So I'm off like about 400 bucks, because I used the last version.
I just didn't see something that matched. I was like, where is this number?
Yep.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
Anyone else?
So what were the major driving factors for the increase to the town's budget?
Yeah, I mean, utilities, transportation, contract, contractual obligations, health insurance, the usual factors, and then the significant positive revenues.
Did you find any cost savings coming back to the three-school model with transportation? Or did you find that was?
Actually, it's fairly neutral. We have to have a third run. So we're, right now, we're looking at the elementary schools on its, give or take five minutes on its current time. The high school, again, will be eight through 12, five or 10 minutes, but about the time it is now. The time in between, we're gonna have to add the new run, which will be for the middle school, grades four through seven. So there'll be fewer buses as far as the, on each run, but there'll be more runs. So it's about cost neutral.
Okay. They have, the drivers have what guarantees on the runs? Each one gets like two hours and like that?
I'm not sure how that works with Telstone. Yeah, I'm not entirely sure. Neil would be able to speak to that.
It's probably why it would kinda wash out, yeah.
So there was a increase in utilities, even though you're not using one building fully?
Utility increases were around 30%. So we worked with our energy broker to try to negotiate some, some better deals. We actually were able to come down a little bit in some of them, but we have solar, we have, you know, our regular, like, National Grid, we have oil, we have propane, we have gas, so we have quite a variety of, of energy sources.
And then the contractual increases were not offset by the layoffs at all?
So we have about 2.75%, which is our cost of living increase for our Unit A staff. There are about 120 of our faculty. If you look at the breakdown that we provided, you'll see, you'll see how it's essentially all tied out to the different function codes, so you can get a sense of what the salaries are from each building. In the reconfiguration, we saved about $755,000 in salaries. But you can see it broken down by school here.
Jason, when you say that, what you're really saying is going to the three-school model, just for the layman in the park, right?
Yeah, sure, sure, yep.
They do, they, he showed that, that they saved the 700 grand, then separately, they whacked away at the staffing to go further.
Yep.
To get to your two and a half million or thereabouts, and total reductions in the initial budget requests.
Right.
And the 2.75 col is on top of the step increases. So it's, you know, it's, it's more than 2.75 is what some folks get.
Do you have a line item budget?
Uh, yes, of course, yep.
Do you have that with you?
No.
Okay. Shouldn't you be presenting that to us, so we can see it?
No, that's usually what the school committee does. They work through that line by line. What we present to the community is essentially the budget book, the overview, the assessment sheet, and then the projected expenditures by building, by function code. So this is what we've done the past six years.
No, I'm aware of this, but it's not really a budget presentation, you understand, right?
Yes, so I was under the impression that I would just be here to answer questions. I didn't know that I needed to have a big presentation tonight, Andrew.
Yeah, but you, you can't ask questions without seeing a budget.
Right, so what was provided to you, Andrew, was what we've done the past six years.
Yes, I know, and I've.
So if you're requesting something different.
And I have each year.
Then you should request that, and we'd be happy to work with you through your town administrator to do what.
Yeah, no, because I've just been asking for a line item budget for seven years, so.
First time I've heard it, so I appreciate you.
Nope, it hasn't, but.
Bringing that forward. I'm happy to work with your town administrator.
Okay, because, yeah, seeing lump sums isn't really helpful for anything.
Past six years, we've done this. But if you'd like us to do something different, we're happy to work with your town administrator.
Do you wanna send the line item budget to Peter?
Yep, I'll share with the board. Yep, that's fun. That's great.
I did meet with Erin Monaco, this was like three years ago, and she said you can walk into the district office, like, anybody can do that and ask him to have it printed. So we did not ask for that this evening, so.
Careful what you ask for.
I know, it's like, I have done it once, and it's significant.
It's about 150 pages of pencils and staples and.
Okay, so Andrew, you wanna wait for that, and before you ask questions, and then you can review it? And then if we need to have you back at the April 22nd, we need to go through the, so we can do that? Okay, perfect. All right. And then I'm gonna jump ahead, just since we have you here. So the regional letter, so our attorney hasn't had a chance to review this yet, unfortunately. But I will say, because I read it, and I'm not a lawyer, just put that out there, right now for everybody, but there was a lot of information here that I found unnecessary. So like saying, this is a public water source, and about the building lease, and things like that. And we're not disputing it's a public water source or any of those things. I think what I personally was looking for, and our lawyer will draft this, is, you know, the regional agreement specifies operational costs are $25,000, and I don't remember the period of time, over this period of time. Water operations, whether they fall in this spending category or not, will be covered by the town. That's kinda what I was looking for. Peter, is that in line with what you?
Yeah, it's really. Yeah, it's really, that letter didn't address the specific terms of the regional agreement.
Yeah, like nowhere is operating cost mentioned, which was weird.
Preview with light of that.
I thought, well, I thought it was weird. Me, again, not a lawyer, so maybe she's like, no, it's not weird because it's this, but I thought it, because it was specifically about the operating costs, and that's not mentioned once here. It talks about the lease and other things. So, um, I think we'll have our attorney, it'll probably be really short, which I think will be better for everyone, because the people who aren't lawyers will understand it more clearly. Um, so that's what, that's what we're working on, so we'll
I've asked.
Yes.
It's on his dance card, he's working on it.
Yeah, so we're, so we'll probably have something later, but just
More thoroughly, for tonight?
It is what it is. So that's the only feedback we have, we haven't had our lawyer go through it, um, fully yet.
Yeah, most of the stuff that's raised, we, I would argue, we, we, we agree.
Yeah.
You know, we're the owner of the water system, we must provide potable water, it's just a question back to the
Operating costs, specifically, which is here somewhere.
Yeah.
So, okay, so we'll have something hopefully at the next meeting. Anything else? All right, well, thank you for coming, you're more than welcome to stay, but if you want to leave, we totally get it. It was nice to meet you, Mr. Spagna.
Thank you, nice to meet you, too.
Yeah, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, too.
Thank you.
My page is
It sounds like Brian's gonna be here, huh?
Yeah, it sounds like Brian's here, so
These out, which are just the, the budget model that you have, but it's specific to Brian's responsibilities, his department's highway, snow and ice, you got storm
So nice, only
We have in our Streets we do stuff, so
I don't think so. Peter, is that what's different, what's in the packet? I think that just pulls out the specific
That's just what's in the packet, yes.
Okay, so it's the same
Yeah, it's just for ease of reference for the discussion.
Okay.
And I sent this to Brian as well, so he can talk through. It's the same as what's in the packet, yeah.
Brian, can you hear us?
Yep, I can, how are you?
Great, I'm good, how are you?
Um, very well, very well.
Great. Thank you for making the time to meet with us tonight, so we're just looking, page of the eighth. So we're just looking at page eight of the budget. Ugh, I had two of them, and I was like, why do I have two and about three of them? Um, okay, so I see only slight increases to the highway regular salaries, and then highway stipends, and then highway other expenses. Can you walk us through the
Yeah. Well, basically, I mean, as, as you know, Peter, worked, worked on this, uh, with some of my, um, input, um, saying level funded, as you requested, uh, we, we definitely need a lot more, but, um, I guess as they say, fighting city hall, and it's not, uh, hasn't been supported, and didn't feel it'd be supported again. Um, uh, the other line expense increase, um, for years and years, that line has been running over, that, that is specifically used for, um, uh, equipment maintenance, uh, equipment, um, repairs, um, uh, the different tools we use, um, hardware, signage, and those different things, and that, as we know, everything has gone up in this world, so having an increase in that line is, um, well warranted. Um, another line that should be increased, but, you know, we're keeping it the same, is, uh, vehicle repair and maintenance. Um, as of right now, I believe, I, this year, I'm almost double in that line. As we speak, I believe it's pretty close. Um, yeah, I don't see any, any questions.
Well, you said you'd like to see lines increase, can you tell me which lines and what purpose would that, what would be the benefit, what would we get out of spending that money?
Well, basically, I mean, I know we've sat down and had this conversation, um, the, the road maintenance, road repairs, uh, have been underfunded, um, this is my thirteenth year, and, you know, I fought for this for, from day one when I came in, um, and we had a small increase at the beginning, and, um, basically, the, the, the public work supplies is what I consider my road repairs, and we can't do any, any work with that, um, it's basically there for maintenance, for the, the what-ifs, for the, the things that have to be done, um, because, uh, because of the, the weather we're having, and storm drains are caving in or collapsing, so we use it to, to fix the repairs and, um, use that for outside contractors to come in and, um, do some work. And it, it doesn't help us to get a project done, um, like I know we've talked about, um, for instance, Providence Street, you know, it, it, a year and a half ago, I, I had a little bit of money in Chapter Ninety, and if I could have got backed by the town, we could have had that road completed, uh, a year ago. But, you know, there, there was, there's never any taxation money put into fixing our roads. Everything is always coming out of Chapter Ninety, um, to do it, and for us to do that, we need to wait year after year, because we're only allowed, allotted, you know, a hundred and, a hundred and nine thousand dollars a year right now, it was a hundred for a while, uh, to do a road project, it's like, three hundred to four hundred thousand, depending, you know, depending on the road. Um, so we, we let it build up until we can do a project, and then we have to just build for a little while.
Okay.
I, I've said it before, I'd love the town to support, you know, putting, uh, uh, some of the money away every year to help with, with the road project.
Okay. Um, so you mentioned you're working on Providence Street this year, what would be your second priority, and what would be the cost of that?
The cost of the second priority, or the
Yes, second priority, please.
Well, we have a couple different streets that are, um, becoming our second priority. Unfortunately, um, not knowing how far we're gonna go, and what, I, I don't have defined costs on the, um, second project in front of me, just because, you, by the time I felt we get to it, you know, putting the time and energy into that project right now, we didn't, we don't have the funding. Um, and so, so what I'm getting at is, I, you know, we've had, we've had a, a five-year plan of, of roads, which has not ever fallen into that five-year plan, because we have another road that kind of falls apart superseded. Um, um, we're on Providence Street. You know, Hill Street really wasn't on the question, but in the past couple years, um, Hill Street's really fallen apart and shown a lot of deficiencies. So, you know, that one really needs to get moved up in, into being, you know, probably placement number two, I'd say, uh, you know, a close second, without the Old Chestnut Hill Road. Um, that's not even talking about the, some of the other streets that, uh, were number two, um, but are holding their own, and, you know, and, and the way we figure out what streets we should be doing is by the amount of traffic that travels them, uh, are they a bus route, are they a through road, are they dead-end road, you know, that's probably warrant some of the projects.
Yep. No, I, I remember some of the parts of the conversation, Brian, by a pal, that I don't remember all the details. Do you have, um, do you have an estimate, and if you don't, it's perfectly fine, because I know I'm, I'm asking you questions that you maybe weren't prepared to ask, because you're correct, that we typically level fund the highway department. But do you know how much it would cost to fix either Hill Street or Old Chestnut Hill Road, if we were to do that this year?
Um, I do have that number, um, but not, not with me at the moment. Um, not prepared to answer that.
Okay.
I think, I think I gave that to you, uh, last year.
You might have
Not Hill Street, I think, I think I gave you Old Chestnut Hill, but not Hill.
I, so I seem to remember Old Chestnut Hill at eighty thousand, does that sound right to you?
That sounds a little
Low?
On the low side, I believe.
Maybe it was one eighty?
I believe that, Orchard Street was about eighty thousand.
Okay.
I think that was right around seventy, seventy-eight.
Okay.
I, I think, I think Old Chestnut Hill is gonna be probably closer to a hundred, but I, I, I do have that number.
Okay, okay, I was just trying to see if there was something else that we could, could squeeze in.
You know, we, we have right now, we, because we waited, we've got about three fifty, three fifty-eight, two forty-eight in, uh, in Chapter Ninety. Uh, that's gonna just about cover Providence Street, um, depending, um, how far we go with, with maybe some of the drainage work that needs to be done, um, and, and, and that needs to be done versus, um, maybe milling and overlaying, um, the east side of it, and totally reconstructing the west side, um, which, you know, that's the way we can be smart with our money. Um, as you know, we had some work done by, um, for the water on the North Smithfield side, the east side, so there's, you know, a little bit of leeway that's come about, come in with that project.
Okay. All right, so I think I've asked, monopolized all the questions, so I don't know if anyone else has any other questions.
Um, yeah, so I have one quick question. Um, highway other expenses, what does that entail?
Uh, as I just explained, that, that's what we're using now, uh, so we, we've added the, uh, front end loader backhoe, um, that, that account is used for, um, the, the annual service that we, for the bi-annual service that we just did on that. Um, that's used for, like, our sign hardware, um, our miscellaneous items, um, the, the shirts and safety vests that we buy for, for the crew, um, shovels, rakes, brooms, um, it's now being used for, um, mower blades and, um, tires for the mower and different things, because we've, we've taken on, you know, the town maintenance, uh, of the elementary school, of the town memorial park, the old town hall, police station, senior center, the old town hall across from the library, behind the library, you know, these are all tasks we've taken on, and yes, we, we, we've had some of their funding moved to our line item for, for salaries, which is where it needs to go, um, but we've incurred some costs, um, within that, because we've added equipment, and with that, you add expense.
I'm just questioning that, because how come it's not included or increased, um, with highway vehicle repairs and maintenance? How come you're using the other expenses as a line item?
Because everything we use it for is not, not vehicles and maintenance.
But
Not, not vehicles, that's used for our trucks, our, um, that type of equipment.
Yeah, but if you're repairing vehicles, shouldn't that be included into that line item instead?
Uh, and, and we both know the long and short, and this is just a gauge, all of these lines end up, um, crossing each other as, as needed, um, but to justify what it's used for, I feel that we, you know, we put them as other expenses, because it's not just the, you know, that, that was a big expense to buy annual maintenance that we did on, on the backhoe, that was a, a larger one, but most, most of the time, it, it's used for the miscellaneous items that we use within the highway department.
Um, and then highway professional services, is that for engineers, for when you do roads?
No, professional services is, uh, that actually used to be, and what we use that for is, um, our storm drain, um, cleaning, and, uh, waste removal, is actually where, uh, professional services goes. Our previous, previous, previous town accountant, um, is the one who set this up this way, that used to say, um, drain, drain cleaning and stuff, but they, they reworded it to what they wanted, um, so really, professional services was just, just the word.
Oh, okay.
We, I, I use that as, um, for our drain cleaner.
Peter, do we have, um, contracted services, do we have one vendor, does this go to bid, or, you know, for the maintenance and repairs of these trucks? Or is it just kind of anybody?
On a haphazard basis, or that, that's not the right word, or as needed, and, you know, I defer to Brian where he takes them, but, uh
We would try going out to bid, or maybe piggybacking off a state contract to save a few dollars?
I don't know, Brian, I
For maintenance, you're saying like general repairs?
Yeah, yeah, when I worked in a municipality prior to this, we, we had a, a pretty big nut for maintenance, and, uh, we'd go out to bid, and, uh, we would find a one-stop shop that would then handle everything, and, uh, what they didn't do, they would outsource, but it would be under that umbrella. We knew what we were paying right up front through that bid price.
Is that bid price on, on like, so when a, a starter in the vehicle went, or an alternator, or
Yep, yep. Yeah, you'd have a
How'd you
Yeah, you'd have a mark
How'd you do that out?
Yeah, you'd have a, a parts price with like a markup
And a labor rate.
And then a labor rate, and then maybe emergency rate, or a tow rate, and, uh, you'd have all like a pricing matrix kind of built in, and, um, you'd have a one-stop shop, but you knew right up front what those costs were gonna be, and then you could bulk buy and, uh, kind of get a better savings.
Yeah.
I, I don't think, I mean, maybe that's an option, that, that, I don't think that per se set up for Millville with having, you know, just a, a few vehicles personally. Um, you know, maybe it is, um, you know, typically, we use, um, between two local garages, one for the, you know, light maintenance, light repairs, and then there's another one that does, you know, a little bit heavier work and has the, the big lift for the truck, if needed.
Yes.
Um, so you're, you're, you're not paying the, the top rate for a heavy truck mechanic all the time, then we, you know, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm not up for it, up for it, but it, I, I think going out to bid for that for Millville, unless you were gonna try to combine, you know, police, fire, and highway, it, it might be a, a good option, but just for the highway department, I, I don't think the fire department has a higher expense rate in vehicle maintenance than I do.
Well, you may be able to piggyback off either a county or a state contract, and that's, that's the other part of this, too, even if you didn't want to go to bid.
Well, I guess, I guess, without interrupting, we do
Sure.
We do do some of that to begin with, um, like for tires, for instance, um, that's out to a, a state bid, um, so we, we get, you know, a really good deal on that already, uh, we buy them through the state bid
Okay.
And that comes down to items like that.
All right, well, thank you.
Uh, Peter, to kind of Brian's point, would it be possible to create, instead of an individual, like, line-in for each department where they have vehicle maintenance, but to combine it into like a town fleet? So that way you could kind of
I'm sure it'd be possible, the thing is, there are distinct differences in the type of vehicle, so
Yeah.
Particularly when you think of a fire truck, and that's where the big money has been in the past, and they have to go to Connecticut typically for specialized, uh, work, especially on these older rigs where, you know, sometimes they're making the replacement part because there's no market for them. So it's a, it's a bit challenging, and, and the other part is that the, you know, Brian's the highway surveyor, he manages his own vehicles, part of the challenge is the downtime, and so he go, is going to a local shop that he's worked with and trusts, and, who hasn't, I would argue, hasn't really, uh, the cost rate isn't the killer, it's the need for the repair is what gets us, right? And, um, that's dealing with, you know, he's got an, he's still using the older truck, for example, um, and that has a, you know, can have more repair needs than, uh, the newer one, for example, so, like, so I, I don't have a, you know, a, a wholehearted yes to that
Yeah.
question.
Not probably for this budget, but could that be something that's explored?
I think that's something worth exploring, though, it's a good idea, yes.
Is there, uh, is there something, uh, Brian, is there something on your fleet that is just kind of Is there, uh, is there something, uh, Brian, is there something on your fleet that is just kind of, uh, I guess a vampire? It's a money vampire that's, uh, eating your budget you wish you could replace?
Um, no, honestly, I mean, we, we, we have, uh, two, two vehicles that are, you know, aged with us, but unfortunately, we, we just had an incident with one of them, so, um, right now, I guess, we should just leave that, leave that question alone.
Alright.
To see what happens with-
Accident related?
Yes, there was an accident, that's in, you know, being appraised for-
Determining fault?
We were not at fault.
We were not at fault, okay. So there'll be subrogation?
Clear, clear fault, state police have been involved, all sorts of things, you know.
So we're expecting-
Data has been pulled from cars under-
So we're expecting subrogation probably in about two years?
Well, I don't know about that, I, but, uh...
If we have to wait that long, then we'd be in trouble, I mean, uh-
Subrogation can take, it can take it depending if, yeah.
With our, our April snowstorm, it, it became a, uh, a big challenge really fast because, you know, we've taken over our, our, our salting of our roads, I mean, not plowing entirely, but salting and not having that truck. The other night when we got the call at nine o'clock at night, and ended up out there for twelve hours, really, uh, really, uh, made, opened our eyes to having our vehicles in good working order. Um, we had to, you know, pull a few, pull a few things out of our back pocket to make it work.
Peter, does this, does Massachusetts give equipment first right of refusal to the, the towns and cities for surplus?
I don't know.
Can we look? Can we ask? Cause we may have an opportunity to grab something out of surplus from the state of Massachusetts and then put it to work here. It might be a, be able to fill a short gap.
Hmm.
Uh, hopefully, we're gonna meet with the insurance company next week and, uh,
Yeah.
we'll get some answers, I mean, I, I'm not, you know, never dealt with it on the municipal side, I know how it can work on the, the private sector, but, uh, I hope we have some better answers next week.
Peter, one of the avenues you can look at is General Services Administration. They give first right of refusal to municipalities and cities. I used to buy some stuff from, you know, the government for-
Yeah, so as a plan B, if, in case it's a long time for this thing to come back into service, even though this is a pretty old vehicle as it is.
They'll either give you the vehicle, uh, on like a, a round robin case with other municipalities, or they'll sell it to you for short money. Might be an opportunity.
Okay.
Uh, and then just one last question. When was the last time you submitted a budget for, um, the annual budget?
Oh, you're looking at one right now?
Yeah, but you didn't submit it, did you?
I worked with Brian on this, so I-
Yes, we did.
And so, so who submitted it?
Well, I went back and forth with Brian on what, uh, what I was, what we should put in there, and here you see the result.
Is that normal for all the other departments too?
Normally, they'll put something in and I'll see it.
Maybe that should be-
Uh, you know, to, to, to back up a little bit, if you wanna, wanna go down that, that, answer that question, and I'm gonna go back to, uh, one of my comments earlier here, been doing this for thirteen years, and for all of ten of it, I fought and fought, and I've been, and, and it's not just this board, uh, but it's been many different boards that have come and gone, and it's, uh, well-known that, you know, you, you're told you're gonna get supported, and you're gonna get supported, and then at the last minute, you, you got knocked down. And it, it only comes to a point, you know, with, how long is somebody gonna keep, um, putting forth all these numbers when it's only gonna come down to, you, basically, your hands are tied, so I get it, but you do it, you, you do what you wanna do anyway, so why, why, why keep fighting city halls? And, and one other comment I have to say about submitting budgets is, um, a few years ago, I lost, lost my internal admin support within the town hall. You know, I had a direct contact, um, that was, you know, between myself and the building department, and I know I've been offered help, and I will not deny that, and, um, I've been, been told I could, you know, sit and try to teach somebody the ropes, but how long, how, how long is somebody else gonna be here? To sit and, by the time you go through teaching them, or to get the help from them, because, uh, um, Jen has offered many, many times to, to sit down with me and go over it and learn it and give me as much help as I wanted, and I thank her for that, but if I'm gonna sit down with her and go over it and teach her, or tell her what I need to do, why not just do it myself? You know, it, it, having the support has not been there over the years, and that's why you don't see a budget key coming through. It's, you put in the budget you want anyway.
So we're like-
But yeah, I did work with Peter on this because he, he started, you know, he, he started throwing the budget at me, and he had some different numbers in there, and I did question him on them, and I asked for it to go back to other numbers, so I will, I will say that I did work on this budget.
About three percent across the board, what were we looking at?
Yeah, so this, this, this budget follows the guidance that was provided. What you saw in your, in the earlier iteration of the model, I had reduced, uh, on this, I'd follow guidance on everything, except for the public work supplies, I had reduced that by fifteen grand, and the reason I had reduced it initially was based on, you look at the actual for twenty-three, which shows on this schedule, and I look at the run rate of how it's been going for this year, and it's a forty-five grand budget, and we've used twenty grand of it, so I thought thirty grand was reasonable to put in there, where I was trying to eke out as, as much deneros as I could in an earlier version of this, okay? But then in talking to Brian, you know, uh, he, he, he wanted the, to, to level fund it, so he's still within the guidance on this. It's the three percent increases for all of the salaries, and yes, they've taken on more work, and they've done a great job of managing the maintenance of, you know, cutting the grass of, of all these various properties throughout town, where before we outsourced this, those things, and, you know, uh, I think they've been doing a great job of it. He is light on the repair and maintenance versus what he's tracking at this year, and he is, and I increased the other expenses based on past experience and the way it's tracking, so I tried to be, you know, as responsible as possible, um, he, but again, he is light on repairs and maintenance. That said, some of the things, like if you look at the professional services, the way Brian described it, some of that arguably falls down into the, you know, street sweeping and the stormwater, uh, line items, which are also, um, level funded based on guidance, but also consistent with the way it's been tracking. Okay, so, but-
So highway professional-
I think he's pretty good.
Highway professional services, is that the line that you hit for, um, contracted plumbing services?
No, so that's all storm, that's all, uh, under snow and ice.
Oh, snow and ice.
Yeah, and so for that, like, we're gonna have a free cash requirement at, at town meeting for somewhere in the neighborhood of forty-five, fifty grand. I think it's tracking at, yeah, forty-two grand over right now, that's before the storm that Brian was just describing. Okay. So, and we budget consistently eighty grand for that, that's a deficit type of, uh, account, you can deficit spend on that one. And you all approve the deficit spending back in January, February, whenever it was, right? So, and, and so the other point for Brian is like, yes, I know he would love to have, you know, a hundred and forty-five thousand under public work supply, so he could do more work on roads, or do more work on some of the storm drains that, or culverts and things like that, but, and, and, and I know that there was, you know, Jen had thought of possibly adding something there for that, just for this fiscal year, but I would argue that we also have, and we may have a surplus free cash available to put in to stabilization accounts, and last year, the town created the highway stabilization account, put eighty grand into it, so this year, that would be the place to add some money in, and then if Brian has a need specifically identified for whether it's equipment or road work of some sort, he can call on the voters at a town meeting or special town meeting to pull out of that stabilization account, so that's one of the ways to deal with sort of, you know, more pressing needs at particular times, that's all. Versus budget in the line item, but yeah, my experience in municipal leadership roles, the highway departments always get whacked when it's time for, uh, finding money in a budget, always.
So I guess my only thing, point would be, the highway other expenses, that increase should maybe be, uh, split with the highway vehicle repairs in order to accurate, more accurately capture how much you're actually spending on repairs?
Well-
I mean, it's not, you're not increasing or decreasing, it's just more matching what you're actually spending.
Yeah, right now, they've spent on other six grand for the five grand budget, and on repairs and maintenance, this is through, I just got this-
Yeah.
-through, uh, end of March, um, they've spent fifteen grand on the sixty-five hundred budget.
But we don't know how much of that twelve grand was repairs, you know what I'm saying?
I don't know.
That's what, yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying, so there's, there could be a chunk of that too, so-
Correct.
You, I would say we will probably want to capture the expenses in the repair line item more so than in the other one.
I hear what you're saying.
Cause that other, the other expense is kind of a catch-all for who knows what, basically.
So you would move maybe, maybe make it like-
Twenty-five hundred up?
Yeah, I was thinking split the difference, at least.
Yeah, put, maybe make it five, make it eleven-five there, and then five in other expenses.
Wait, sorry, what? So like twenty-
Five, if you take off five off highway, off two seventy-eight, so that line goes from ten thousand to five thousand.
Okay.
And then you bump two seventy-three from sixty-five hundred to eleven thousand.
So you put it all in there, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, however that works, if you wanna do that, that, but at least that way you're accurately capturing more closely to what these actuals are.
Okay, and then, do we typically pay ten thousand, though, in the annual services?
Yeah, so you may wanna bump it up a little bit more, I think, you know, I would, I, well, I would, I would, I would go ten on that, and I would go, I would double the sixty-five hundred. I would go ten plus on that line item.
I wrote down twelve and I made it ten, so may, maybe add thirty-five hundred to that line from free cash.
Yeah, make it, yeah, just make it ten.
Yeah, so we're increasing it by another thirty-five hundred.
What, what, what line is that?
What, two seventy-three, Brian, so we're talking about the highway vehicle and maintenance, taking it from sixty-five hundred to ten thousand, and leaving all the other lines the same, for now.
Okay, so this would just be the eleven, and then this would be at five, right?
No, so we're talking about making this one ten and leaving this one ten, so an increase of thirty-five hundred.
Okay, that's, yeah, that wasn't what I was suggesting, I know.
I know it's not.
So, cause I'm not in favor, I would, my thing is, is ma- mainly to act, because you're gonna run a deficit no matter what, because right now, they're both running over ten. So my thing was mainly just to try to make an effort to get them closer to where they should be, but you're not gonna be able to, you're probably gonna run a lot, deficit in those line items regardless of what you put in there, so- how much do you wanna chase that tail?
Not that much.
Well...
Um, are there any other questions for Brian? I'm seeing heads shaking, no, Brian, you might not be able to see that, so you're welcome to stay and listen, but if you wanna go, that's also fine. Thank you so much for coming.
Thanks, Brian.
Oh, thank you, and, uh, I appreciate all your feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so moving right along, alright, so the next line is the latest draft budget overview and next steps. Peter, I feel like we should look at the free cash.
Yes, that's fine, so that's-
So we have correspondence on free cash, I don't know if anyone took a look at it?
It's this sheet that looks like this, and I'm about to hand you an analysis of the free cash, uh-
I have it.
-surplus, you have it.
Yes.
And also for the others, yep.
There you go.
So, we, our certified free cash came in at seven hundred and fifty grand, and the state gives you a crazy schedule, there it is. I'm sorry, things weren't quite in the order, but-
That's alright.
So, but it comes to seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and ten dollars, that's your certified free cash determination as of six thirty twenty-three, that's the, right, we haven't gotten to the end of fiscal year, it's a point in time, and it's the last prior fiscal year, and, and so, uh, town accountant Laura, and working with former town accountant, still gives us some help, Tara, helped come up with an explanation, the question was, what, wh- where did we have, where did we fall above the revenues we projected in last year's budget model, and where did we, um, spend less than we had budgeted? And so, I've just handed you three pages of analysis of the, that basically explains the seven hundred and fifty grand, okay, of free cash. And so, for example, our excise taxes, we budgeted four twenty last year, came in at four sixty-four, so there's forty-four grand higher than we had projected. Cannabis or ex, uh, tax, local tax on the marijuana revenues, we get three percent of every sales dollar. We projected seventy-five grand, it came in at a hundred and twenty-four, so there's a forty-nine grand piece. Uh, penalties and interest, uh, you know, that happens on late taxes, late dog fees, late, you know, who knows what. We projected thirty, came in at forty-eight, there's eighteen grand. The marijuana impact fees, we projected seventy-five, it came in at one sixty-four, which included, excuse me, payment of, uh, half of, uh, FY twenty-two's cannabis fees that were due, so it's a cash basis, but that's a nearly ninety thousand dollar increase. We're not gonna see that sort of thing next year because the rules have changed, okay? So we know for next year, I budgeted thirty grand there, um, which maybe we can identify thirty grand of impact costs. You know, other fees, ambulance fees, we budgeted thirty-five, it came in at fifty-six, I'm trying to remember what I budgeted there, I think I put up the fifty-
More, for your work.
Right, so, yeah, I put that up to fifty, I'm pretty sure, so-
Yeah, this is incoming, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the net number, and so, anyway, so, I, I, I have, you know, I might tweak some of the revenue forecasts for the, this model based on this, but not by much, from what I can tell. For example, you say, well, why don't you go excise, I went from four twenty to four twenty-five, you say, well, we did four sixty-four last year versus the four twenty budgeted, why wouldn't you go higher? Well, the thing is that a law, a large piece of that is for excise tax on new vehicles is the bigger dollar stuff, and people under today's interest rates are less likely to be buying or leasing new vehicles, so I don't wanna go too aggressive on that, right? That's the logic I'm using. Licensing and permitting, you know, Joe's been active, so there's been new activity, uh, out there, maybe it slowed down a little bit, again, because of interest rates and who knows what, but, um, you know, I put a little extra on that for this model. The, down at the bottom, miscellaneous revenue, that's the insurance payment for the coal thefts. Okay? So that's forty-eight grand right there, so all of these revenues were, uh, uh, three hundred and, nearly three hundred and ten grand higher than projected. That's three hundred and ten grand of the seven fifty free cash, okay? So then you go to the expenses, uh, by department and where we come in lower, so for example, reserve fund, we didn't use that last fiscal year, so all twenty-nine grand of that is turned back, there's twenty-nine grand of free cash, if you will. The biggest slug is down in the police department, we budgeted for, um, six full-time officers, but the positions, we had three, you know, plus a chief, we had three vacancies in FY twenty-three, and then in FY twenty-four, we removed one of those positions, so we're running at five for this year, and I think we still have one vacancy there, so, but that was a hundred and, you know, a hundred and sixty grand of turnback right there. Communications, you know, we had a, a full-time position budgeted there, and the person, uh, had left, so we've been using part-time help, so we got thirty-two grand of turnback. Tri-county, um, we budgeted for, I don't know, two students there and, uh, cost of transportation, that was the source of year-end transfers, leaving twenty-one grand of that budget as remaining. And all of that turned back, right, this year we have tri-county and no students. And what we have in the budget this year, I forget, but uh, that's a source of either year-end transfers that might be needed. Or it's turnbacks for this fiscal year. So this just gives you a bunch of, uh, some of these things, highway, you know, spent thirty-two grand less than what was budgeted, you know, and that. Is he didn't use the, you know, the, even though he's asking for more and we've level funded the forty-five grand, he only used. You know, fifteen grand of it or twenty grand of it last year, you know, that sort of thing. Storm water, uh, didn't use all that was budgeted there. That's, that's fine, but I think, you know, we probably have the need. Another big item last year, uh, health insurance turned back thirty-four grand, we budgeted for so many. And it wasn't utilized, this year we're tracking it, gonna use just about all of it, so, um, it's not a source of. It's not gonna suggest that we reduce what we budgeted for FY twenty-five based on this. But it did contribute, so there were total turnbacks, as they call them, where we spent less than budgeted. Uh, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, again, a big piece of that was the police department. Right, so there, there's seven hundred and fifty of surplus. That's not, I would argue, not a recurring surplus, not a reason to change what we've currently projected in the budget model. But it's a benefit that then after that is what she might use it for. And we know we're looking at a model that shows a substantial deficit. And the deficit that shows. Does not include the full cost of projected for MES water operations. It only shows a quarter of that cost, the other two, three quarters are in the Warren Article sixteen. So if you were to put the full cost back in the budget, you'd increase the deficit currently shown of three twenty-eight. You'd have to increase that by ninety grand.
That's almost a hundred, yeah.
Okay, so. That's what you're looking at, but.
Yeah, so, cause I saw this earlier too when Peter and I met, so I had some thoughts and that's why I was asking Brian about roads. To see, I was hoping that there was a road for like seventy-five years that we could do, because that would be something that. Would be not as challenging, um, but just quick math, so we have seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. And thank you, Peter, so much for doing this analysis, because I think if people hear that number, they're like. How are you not spending all this money, but then you look at, there's, you know, six-figure turnbacks from police. There's other, and then other revenues that we weren't expecting. So if we take out the three twenty-seven for the deficit and then the ninety that we have. Um, for MES water, that leaves us with three hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight oh seven, which makes me really sad, because it was like, you had this big number and then. It's already like, kind of shrunk. And then three thirty-one, so if we take off, say, forty-five thousand for snow and ice, that leaves us with two eighty-six, eight oh seven. And then I was thinking we could put maybe, even maybe a full hundred thousand into highway as a one-time for, for a road. Another road that we could fix this year. And then the thirty-five hundred into the highway, and then that would leave us, hold on, I didn't do this right. A hundred and eighty-three, three oh seven for general stabilization. But that means we wouldn't put anything in the highway then, because we'd be putting, giving Brian a hundred thousand for a road. So, so that was my kind of, that's my suggestions, I'm not married to any of that, if someone says, I don't think we should do a road. I'm, that was just what I was thinking, because I, I have driven on Old Chestnut Hill Road a couple times and it's sad, I've also driven on Hill Street, which is also sad. There are many roads that are, could use some help, um. And I thought since we had so much surplus, that might. Be nice to do a road, so. But if no one else thinks so, like. I also could see where someone said, well, let's put this in stabilization for a rainy day. The roads are amazing, but they're not impassable. So. And we don't have to finalize this today, that's just my.
Put it in stabilization and then wait to see what comes with the water line?
Um, so, yeah, so you would want to put, so nothing for the roads at all, you put all on stabilization?
Just thinking about it out loud.
No, it's fine. So if we did that.
How much do we have in stabilization right now?
We have about a, a little over a million.
Yeah, I think it's over a million, I don't know the number.
I mean, in all.
It's a good million.
Yeah, but in all reality, that would be a drop in the bucket for a pipeline.
Correct.
Wouldn't come close, so.
Alright, so if we put it on stabilization and we kept the thirty-five hundred that we just added to the highway. We would have two hundred and eighty-three thousand, three oh seven, actually, I could have just done this, this way, whatever. I made the math harder for myself.
And just so we're clear on why this went from what you saw last time of a hundred and fifty-eight or whatever that we were at. Is I put in the full amount of the school budget request versus the guidance that was in the last model, right? I added forty grand, like I touched on at our last meeting, twenty and twenty to two line items in the fire department. Um, so I added forty grand to that, I added Brian's fifteen grand back to that line item. And uh, I don't know, tweaked like council on aging, you had a change on that, uh, one of their line items, small amount. So that, that's how we got to the three twenty-eight, now we're adding thirty-five hundred highway, and then the question is whether you add something in the budget. Versus stabilization, highway stabilization versus general stabilization of whatever you use. Oh, I'm sorry, and, 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 and the core thing is that you're using, whether you're using. Free cash to close the deficit.
Yeah.
Right, which.
That's what's bad.
What, what that does is it, it creates a, this creates a base of cost. Which you're gonna deal with, a built-in deficit for next year, for which you're unlikely to have free cash to close that hole. Which means you have to deal with in the, the big O discussion. So you have to tee up for that, but you're avoiding the big O because of the free cash in this situation. Or you're doing something else on these budget.
Yep.
Amounts.
So my thinking, because we did have all this this year, is we could, and again, not sold on the hundred thousand for a road or not. But we float the budget this year and then we can talk about at the special town, have a special town meeting in the fall to put forth an override. If the override passes and we have it in April, if it passes, fine, if it doesn't, then we have to go back and be like, alright. Look, we floated you last year because we could, we can't this year and we'll have to take whatever, two hundred thousand out of the school, fifty thousand out of this, fifty thousand out of that. So. But I wanted to put it for a vote in April, because we have, the way the town meeting works, like, like if we were to do, we don't, I, we don't have time to put forth an override now. And I think with seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cash, task for an override is irresponsible. So. That's why, that's what I was thinking as a process, so we have an, on the special town meeting to have it to a vote, if it passes, great, if it doesn't, then. Feet to the fire, that's it.
And, and the number, the, the, this model will be fluid right up to town meeting, likely so, right? So whatever you wind up, there might be some changes, more, most specifically that I would be concerned about is. You know, I've, I've put in estimates for Norfolk Aggie. And also Tri-Valley, okay, and Tri-Valley, you know, we budgeted, uh, tri-county vocational. We budgeted fifty-eight grand for this year and we have no need, okay? And I budgeted level, basically level funded that, uh, it's about fifty-eight grand there for next year. But I don't know whether there's gonna be any students, there might be even more than what we've budgeted for. Because they had indicated something last year, they've indicated something for this year, but they're gonna get closer to more final, final. Sense of number, which still isn't the final number, right, so, and likewise on Norfolk Aggie, same thing. I think they had so many applicants and this is at least one fewer than have applied is what's budgeted for. So there's some exposure there, okay, but um. And so that's a challenging thing to budget and it sometimes comes down to the very close to town meeting. Where we ultimately have a better sense, but still never the right sense, unfortunately, so. It could help or it could hurt.
Yes, I'm sorry, do you have a question? Yes, of course, do you want to come to the view?
Uh, Jason Maylin, five ten, Chestnut Hill. I have a question, to your point about stabilization or putting a hundred thousand to the roads budget. Would it not be a good idea to take that money and put it into the highway, uh, emergency fund?
The highway stabilization?
Because then that gives you the opportunity to.
You just suggested, actually, you and Peter think a lot alike.
Brian wanted to suggest a road to repair, he'd be able to bring it up at a town meeting.
And say for this project, yeah.
And present a budget for that.
Yeah.
And you'd also be able to have that money in reserve in case nothing gets passed and you can take it back in the same town meeting. Cause you need to have the town.
Yeah, we could do that for sure.
I think that's probably.
That's better, so we have the two eighty-three left, so we can move, right now there's eighty in there, so we can move twenty, fifty.
There is eighty, right, so if you put a hundred into that, it's usually a hundred and eighty, but the money's still available for other things that need to emerge.
Absolutely, that's a great suggestion, no, 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 that's a great suggestion and we could certainly. Since it's kind of two for two on that, then I think that's good direction, Peter, we'll listen to you, Peter's right.
Oh, I don't mean to be right, it's a good idea.
Sorry, Andrew, go ahead.
I like you dead.
So the, do we know if there are any like hidden benefits to having, let's say, like do two roads to repair in, in one year? Or versus like having it just in the stabilization, like what is the?
There are some economies of scale, actually, because um, the red, Blackstone did Orchard Street. And then when we did it, there was like some equipment that we needed to move to town. And with it already being in the vicinity, we didn't have to pay for the moves, so there's some savings that you can have. I see other people nodding their heads, I don't know exactly, I'm, this is all I remember, like if someone knows, yes, you did this and they move it here and it saves us. Yeah, so.
Yeah, so if we could like.
But if the money was in stabilization, you could bid though.
Well, yeah, that's, I'm just wondering like what the, yeah.
So maybe we should ask Brian and say if we put a little bit extra, like, would you not need the hundred thousand to do Old Chestnut Hill? Or would it be like eighty-seven, five hundred instead and save a little bit, I don't know, yeah, we can definitely ask that question. I know people don't like the override word, I'm not a fan of it myself, but I guess since we haven't asked the question of the townspeople and. Since I've been on the board, which has now been.
Six years, yeah, I mean, it was before my time, I've been here five years.
So.
Five wonderful years.
So I would like to ask the question if people are amenable, if they are, great, if they're not, then that gives. I personally would feel more empowered to push back harder on certain budgets, knowing that everyone says, no, I don't want this. But I will put forth a. Like, I'm gonna put forth a case, like I've already worked out a little bit of math here and there around, this is what you would get for roads, this would be more on fire. Um, the school will have to figure something out and um. I, I would want to put something forth that's kind of fair and not crazy, like I'm not thinking anything close to a million dollars at all. And then. And then the other thing, because I think, Andrew, you had mentioned this in Quada, I remember you nodded your head specifically. Say we did, say we put forth a million and we're like, well, we're only gonna spend this much, if that's available, it'll probably be spent and you both had agreed on that. So we could do, I, if I were to put the plan that I will put forth and if it passes, great, if not, again. It'd be something like four hundred and five, between four hundred, five hundred thousand, like one year, like something small. And then another override the second year was something really small, like a hundred thousand or one fifty or one twenty-five or something to space it out. So one, we don't spend it all at once, we try to be more responsible, um. So that's kind of my thoughts around it, I don't know if anyone, I know no one else has probably thought about this, this is something when Peter let me know about the free cash. I've been kind of thinking about it a little bit, um, so that's.
What about using it to get closer to the number suggested by the fire department for the EMT part-time wages?
Yeah.
They're still super far away on that and.
The stabilization, you mean the free cash for now?
Yeah, well, so what they're requesting versus what we're recommending, I mean, still underground.
To make my life a little easier, can you let me know the line number?
Seventy.
I'd like to use my papers all around.
I had two ideas on this and.
Okay.
It's probably gonna be unpopular, I might as well say it. One, we use free cash to get the number closer, or two, you do an override sometime soon. And, you know, we've have that like caveat of, we're gonna use that money to fund the fire department more, so.
So, uh, the last meeting, um, the fire chief did find that we had two hundred and thirty-eight thousand in collections. He's assigned for it and collected, that's dating back to July first of twenty twenty-two. So that money is sitting there potentially, if we get half of it, you know, that's, that's still a win.
Yeah.
What's also in question is the, the formula for the rates, and that's something that he hasn't touched yet. We have to adjust the rates to bill back to the ambulance, that is gonna have some cash, impacting cash coming on the backside. What I'm trying to do is take this in a couple-step process, I'm hoping to build more coverage with EMT basics and then, then come back to the table and look at advanced life support. We're not quite there yet, way off, but.
No, because I talked to Captain Foster on Wednesday and he said that, you know, they're really struggling for. They only have one EMT basic there, they don't have a paramedic.
Well, they have, they have two EMT basics, but they're stacking them on the same shift so that you have eight hours of coverage. Rather than staggering them and using a firefighter for a driver, we could have sixteen hours of coverage a day, but they're not doing that, they haven't, they've chosen to stack them both on the same shift. Now, and if we went to ALS, this is jumping ahead, we'd have to have at least one EMT and one paramedic. But right now, we need to have at least a driver and an EMT, so I'm trying to get more EMTs, just so we have EMT basic. That's like the first step, and I think we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna get there, it's gonna be a slow process, but painful, but the revenue coming on the backside. And then probably grants, and people hate writing grants, but that's probably, there's some legwork that needs to be done. So, I don't think we're quite there at the override question yet, but.
Yeah, I think, no, I wasn't saying to do, no, that's a last resort, but.
Well, I think the administration needs, needs to really kind of dig in and find how the operation works and then.
Well, they only have a part-time chief and they only have a captain, that, so it's kind of hard to do the administrative stuff when you have a guy who's there. Not full-time, and that's not a discredit to him, that's just a, that's just a fact.
Which is why I was like, you know, saying way back when, I hate saying it, I was like, well, we had a public safety chief, but, you know, it's tough.
Yeah, but that's, that's just not the situation we have, we have.
It's not the situation we currently have, you're absolutely right.
Yeah.
So, more grant writing, they've got to fine tune the calculations on the backside. And then from there, we'll, we gotta look at it again, but like I said, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand since July of twenty twenty-two, that's, that's a good sized nut. Just kind of laying out there and nobody's signed to collect it. It's an oops.
The other thing with doing an override and, um, is you have to go to a town meeting first.
Yeah.
And then an election, so we'd have to open the warrant and put it on the ballot, because we've closed the warrants, we have to do that to put it on this warrant. I actually, I was like, oh, really, because we put forth a couple overrides before I was on the board of selectmen, the previous time ministry, without having that town meeting vote. I don't know how that was okay, but, um.
And then jumping around a little bit, in the last meeting, I had mentioned, um, at the council on aging presentation, that there was some non-emergency medical transports. That were in there, I would still like you to follow up, Peter, if you could, on whether or not Medicaid, Medicare could pick up some of that tab. Cause that might free up a small portion of the budget.
But what I heard Matthew saying, he's, you're suggesting. Gooseing up the least line one seventy and maybe one sixty-nine, I mean, one sixty-nine looks like what they're asking.
Yeah, I talked to Captain Foster and he said that's. Yeah, I talked to Captain Foster and he said that's.
So it's really just one seventy, line one seventy, right? Gooseing that up, which, which, and I've sat in on like the public safety committee is still evaluating what they need for staffing.
Correct.
Even before you get into the, the, you know, acute life saving, even just under the, what they're at. And so that's why, and, and I, I don't know that they've made a compelling enough concise argument, concisely and easily understood. And I've mentioned that to Captain Foster. If you want to promote something, you gotta make it absorbable and it's not absorbable. Those were, there were six pages of all sorts of stuff that I, I don't know if anybody read through it. You all have had it. And it's not easy to comprehend, right? And so you can't buy into it if you can't comprehend it. And part of the hope was that the public safety committee, which we have the chair and the vice chair present this evening, you, you know, could be the ones who's, who's vetted what the Fosters of the world are looking for. And then come and say, we recommend that the town put, you know, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one or some other number on line one seventy, but we're not, you're not there yet. You've got a lot to go.
Now, now to kind of speak to that, you're, you're right, Peter. Uh, I think um, the committee needs to really evaluate those presentations, fine tune some more before both chiefs can come in and do a formal presentation.
Yeah.
They need to present it, but yeah.
I agree.
They need to fine tune that. There needs to be a couple asks, not a dozen.
Right, right.
We're getting closer, but we're not there yet.
From what Captain Foster told me, the contractual obligation is that it's a hundred dollars for a twelve-hour shift, part-time. Their, what their math is, is they want to do a minimum wage raise to fifteen an hour to one eighty.
To one eighty, yeah. And they've been doing that unofficially.
Yeah.
With some of the current staff to try to retain. Yeah, and I get it. I get it. I just don't know if.
They tried to do, their, their effort to do that was to attract other people to come in and fill the shifts.
Right.
And they're filling it with the same guy.
Well, because retention, there is a slight connection between retention and recruitment. The theory is, is the word will spread if you're retaining the same people and turn over lessons.
Right.
Yeah. Quite sure if we're there yet. I would like to see more EMTs, but I don't think we're there yet.
Yeah.
But, but you wouldn't say change the number of one twenty-six, which I had added twenty grand to it since last time you saw it.
Not yet.
And the, and the one above I added twenty grand. You're not ready to say a different number.
Not ready to make any recommendations and I frankly, I think the chiefs need to be here to make the recommendations. They need to do the presentation and say, this is what we need.
So to be fair, Chief Thier came and put forth and said he needed another one sixty.
Yeah.
And they, and they gave us, I don't have them with me. But they hand out like, yeah, it was multiple pages. So he, he did bring that.
I know, but there, there should be a formal strategy they need to present. I mean, come in.
Yes, of course.
I'm just listening to doing the math. So are we saying that the EMTs that work for us make less than minimum wage?
Um, no, I think.
Fifteen and change?
Yeah, I'm not.
According to the.
I don't.
The CBA.
When they cover the shift at the station, it's, they're following the CBA rate, which is a hundred bucks.
More.
No doubt.
And these people require training?
I mean, their contract, right? The union, you know, at least we get one full-time.
We had a bunch of them show up for last Tuesday and, you know, we're nothing less than heroic. So I think the fact that we're not paying them, I know the argument is, you don't have the money. But I feel like this is something that we should be using free cash to supplement, just because what they're doing is a selfless and thankless job and it, it really reflects, cause it's really just about loyalty. They're not here for the money. They would go elsewhere if they're, you know, if they were going to private. I mean, they're making, they would be making at least thirty dollars an hour if they were in, doing private, so. Just a.
Do you want to volunteer?
Well, no, but.
So you want to add ninety-seven thousand dollars and match what he requested?
I mean, personally, yeah. I know that's not going to happen because a lot and I feel like there are other ways that we can maybe possibly restructure like.
Well, if we have two thirty-eight, I mean, that's a one-year solution. And then what would be the um, do you have any estimates about recurring revenues from ambulances? Actually, we do, right? And that work that was.
Well, the problem with that is, is there's, there's some factors there. One, we don't have ALS. And, and if there's an ALS call, we need to give that call away to an area town and actually ask somebody to take it. We can't even really bill back for it. Um, all we can provide is EMT basic right now. And um, if we get any mutual aid calls, it's very limited because we don't have ALS capability. It's a big investment. So uh, to kind of bring that back, um, I don't think it's a big number.
Yeah, well, last, sorry, we got fifty-six thousand and twenty-three for our fees.
Problem with, the problem we have is we have an aging population here and the medical conditions are going to become more and more complicated that will require ALS. So I think as the population continues to age, our EMT basic ambulance is going to be a little shaky. So I'm trying to move on this. We're trying to increase staffing, but I don't think we're there yet. I really need the fire chiefs in here to make a present, the fire chief to make a presentation.
I think that kind of strengthens my argument too, because if we have such a, if we have an aging and vulnerable population and we don't have the same person that's there on call, then what's going to happen?
You're talking about fire department or are you talking the ambulance?
Probably most likely the ambulance, but I mean.
Yeah, well, those are the EMTs. Um, and then there's a whole level of training for the firefighters.
I think either way.
And so the idea is to try to step up coverage with the rescue and with the EMT basic, you're going to have a firefighter driver and you're going to have an EMT working patient. That's what our goal is and we're trying to do that. So we're, we're slowly moving in that direction. It's a, it's not a big jump, but.
Wouldn't the math on that in terms of cost structure be different than what was baked into this, the ask that they had in the six-page analysis?
Yeah, I mean, uh, there's a, there's a big number, um, but if you, it was like what, four hundred something thousand originally is what they were asking for, just shooting from the hip. But I think.
I thought that was ALS. No, that, that was.
Well, if they're asking for ALS, then that's a huge jump.
Let's take that off the table for the moment, right? And just do BLS coverage twenty-four seven where you have the drug, you know, firefighter and EMT. That's, that we don't know an analysis of, do we?
I'm not, I don't recall if they were trying to stack EMTs, two per shift.
I don't know.
If they could walk before they could run, I think we would have better coverage twenty-four seven and we'd be able to spread our money um, appropriately if we have a firefighter and an EMT.
Right, right.
So then that's what we're trying to do. And I think that's basically a couple hundred thousand dollar delta. To try to get twenty-four seven coverage with that basic necessity. I, I don't even think that's factoring in benefits. That's just part-time spread across all the shifts.
Shown elsewhere anyway, but that.
Yeah, that's, that's why I think, I think we have a couple hundred thousand dollar delta. Just to kind of get to that point. And I'm not familiar with it and maybe you have more experience, what the billback rate on that, how much we could get covered on the back end? Cause it is only an EMT basic. I'm not sure there's a lot.
Yeah, so I don't know the answer to what that, the reality is in terms of whether we'd be able to respond to more calls. How many more, how many calls aren't we responding to right now? Without the twenty-four seven. I'm not looking for any, but that's a key.
That's tricky.
Thing. It is tricky.
Cause if it's an ALS call, take it right off the table.
Screwed anyway.
Screwed. Can't do it. If it's an EMT, you know, you could fill it with long call folks. So I don't think we're not covering the EMT basics.
Richard, Dylan's got a question.
Quick question. Dylan, I'm on the town planner. Um, who's doing our triaging for ALS versus BLS calls?
Is that?
I don't know why you would need ALS when you had, if you had good BLS.
Well, depend, I think it depends on the call, but I think the chief could probably answer it.
Yeah. I don't know who's doing the triage for that.
So that's the EMTs. They're arriving at the scene, they're making a quick diagnosis and assessment of the patient and I think they're following some protocols.
They're calling for ALS, okay.
Intercept.
When you're doing intercept, no one has a fly car in the towns around? It's only a ALS ambulance available?
I, I, I don't know the protocols. What I do know is that typically i- if it's an ALS call, if an ALS, you know, requested rescue, they just kind of rule us out, so.
Okay. Love to talk about it more.
Yeah.
Chief Goop.
The, the ALS intercept is they meet up and they assist Millville. So Millville's still actually doing a transport. And then, and then the ALS ambulance is assisting them unless it becomes so much that they'd be taking like maybe all the gear out of the truck. I've only seen a few times where they'll take it over when our um, members have responded out to.
Yeah, and but we're not making any revenue on that call at that point.
I don't know that answer.
Yeah, no, I'm, I say, I am, I know, kind of stretching here, but we'd have to outsource the ALS call to the area town. They're providing the equipment.
You still transport, sorry.
Not, uh, not necessarily.
You're a fly car, paramedic and you go onto someone else's ambulance, you should get the transport fee and they should get the medical fee.
Should and what's actually happening are two different things. You know, like we've just kind of dived in and realized that there was some unbilled collections of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. So we're really trying to crawl.
Responsible for that.
Fire chief. And he is now correcting it, so.
Thank you.
This is a learning process, I think, for a lot of folks and they.
You tying his receipt of that to his budget?
Well, that's what we're starting to kind of look at. The revenue coming on the backside and all of that is not collectible because um.
But fifty percent would be a nice.
We're hoping half, yeah. And I would like to utilize that. Uh, we haven't really had more discussion on that. I'm hoping to get the, the fire chief in to make a presentation first, but um, yeah, I mean, I, I would hope to apply that to the budget and expand it. It's not a long-term solution, but it's a short-term.
Well, that was generated revenue over two years. But if you stayed up in the collections, fifty percent of that two years is one year. You generate that every year. So that could be a line item.
It, it really is an accumulation of bad past due accounts over, over the many years.
Oh, I thought he said.
It's many years.
I did, July first of twenty-two and, and Peter's trying to say that it's going back further. I don't really know.
So that two thirty-eight wasn't just the past two years.
No, 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 no. It's, it's outstanding, uncollected. And that hasn't been sent to a collection agencies. No, ninety days past due and about, and older. And it hasn't gone to collection and the collection takes thirty percent of whatever they collect or whatever the rate is. And so that, none of that's gone to collection. The chief hasn't
Pulled the trigger.
Pulled the trigger on that. So how much of that realistically is collected, it remains to be seen. And separately, the way it hits the budget is by way of what we would forecast for ambulance fees, half of which is to the general fund. It impacts the budget, half of which goes to public safety stabilization.
Why does that have to go to the general fund for my own due?
It, it's not a contra-budget item, if you will. It, it's a revenue item and it's a separate line item in our revenue that we report.
Just for, for the money.
Those are fees and other things. It's revenue. None of it goes to offset a budget cost. I don't. I don't make the rules.
Oh, I'm asking.
So yeah, I don't think that, that two hundred and thirty-eight thousand is going to be reoccurring.
No.
But I'm, I'm not quite sure. When they said July first of twenty twenty-two,
Yeah.
I'm not quite sure what they were talking about. They said that was a, they gave that date specifically. But you're, you're, you're sure that was something that's before?
I'm not sure.
We don't know.
But everything I've seen on that, it's an accumulation of outstanding, not yet paid amounts. Some of which if they, it goes to collection. See, the other factor is if it goes to collection, now it is John Smith of Millville is getting calls to collect on an outstanding balance.
Right.
That's where the money's going to come from.
Yeah.
Not John Smith's uh, Ross Blue Shield.
Yeah, we're John Smith widow.
That's right.
Cause if some of these patients.
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah.
Just a question. Is there a trigger, Peter, as to when these things would be looked into so they're not four, five, six years in the reals where everybody can't remember anything? Is there an opportunity here to say, listen, we didn't.
It's being looked into right now.
Well, I know that, but I'm not saying if it goes back before that. I mean, it seems to me that, it sounds like a large amount of money that some of it has been
Yeah.
Back for, so I would think that after eighteen months, someone may say, listen, we're going to make a determination this one way or the other. Cause these things have a way of just hanging on and staying in vogue for five, six years and then it's forgotten about.
And you have a chief transitioning there.
You got a whole bunch of things. You got some board transitions, TA transition, you have a whole bunch of things. It should almost be an automatic, we need to do something as of a certain date. So at least like Andrew always says, try to get a goal or something. Otherwise the thing just floats. You know, I, I just don't think that's good management.
We, we still don't really have any admin staff.
That's what I was thinking for a structural. So I don't know, I know for police, you guys do like civil service and they can do like assessment centers for like, in promotions. Is there a way we could do that with the fire department where you have the park chief and then maybe you have like deputy chiefs under that? Cause I don't think we have a deputy chief. We just.
We don't, there's no deputy chief right now. There was, he retired. You have a cap and, and the chief is, you know, he's a strong chief and he's made the promotions of his people um, without, you know, he, with full authority is, I guess, the way I would put it.
And we're not civil service.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, but that's all part of, even the public safety is struggling with the right structures and stuff like that.
Yeah, cause I know that the captains are doing a lot of the administrative stuff, but they don't have the authority to do that because captains don't have the same authority as chiefs, obviously, so.
Yeah.
That's another issue, but I think it plays into it.
Mm-hmm. And that captain works in the evenings, if I recall too.
Oh, I see him during the days. I don't know his work schedule or how, you know, and he's not a high-cost uh,
No.
uh, service provider, because he has a full-time gig in another community.
Yeah.
So who's literally responsible for that? I mean, is it kind of like, who really knows and it's kind of like this?
We have a public safety committee now, so that was a start.
No, the fire chief is, you know, controls the department, that.
Yeah, I'm saying of the, of the funds that were sitting out there. Who's responsible?
Fire chief.
Yeah, the fire chief is looking.
Hearing, you're saying that the fire chief, they didn't have any administrative help to do that, correct?
Well, I'm saying, yeah, there's a lack of.
That's correct. You didn't have the administrative help to do it. So we don't have the administrative help. We've got money that's sitting out there that no one knows about. And we're talking about things here of who's going to be responsible to do that?
So the chief is responsible.
Responsibility? Is that a, is that a safety committee responsibility?
The fire chief's responsibility.
Pardon me?
It's the fire chief's responsibility as the head of his department to find them, those monies.
Okay, and he's, he understands that's his responsibility going forward.
He's on the public safety committee with Richard.
Going forward, he's not one of them.
Going forward, okay. So we, we've got that taken in. Is there a timeframe for when he can go back and look at the stuff or he hasn't got any help to do that?
So uh, high overview, I've been informed that he is signing off on that collection. Uh, I don't know if he's officially done it yet.
I don't know that.
He was supposed to sign off on it and uh, collections was.
Goes to an agency.
So you're saying you could get fifty, plus you gotta pay thirty to the, to the vig, right?
Probably wind up about half ballpark. I mean, uh, medical collections are, are pretty, pretty strong compared to regular civil collections, but.
Yeah, yeah.
I would say half.
I'm just trying to get you, get him some extra money to close that gap.
Same here, yeah.
It just seems like you got money there, but no one's really sure who's doing what. But now I understand it's the police, it's the fire chief. So he wants that money for his budget. He's gotta.
He's gotta earn it, yeah.
Gotta sign up and get done.
I mean, Jerry, it was shocking to kind of learn this. I mean.
When you said that last meeting, I was like, what?
It, it makes all the sense in the world.
Surprised. We were all surprised.
We had these budgets pretty well squared out and all of a sudden I'm finding out there's money here and there's money over here and it's like, what?
Well, it's money coming in the backside that we can use to, you know, reestablish the budget. And rather than going to taxpayers and asking for an override, we've got money in the backside.
Yeah.
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 No, I agree with the, I think the process you got makes logical sense.
Yeah.
I was just questioning who was in charge, that's all. Thank you, Philip Maile.
Yeah, sure. Um, okay, well, are there any thoughts in terms of the fire budget? So Matthew feels it should be increased. So basically, so just look at what was requested. So the entire request from the fire chief was four hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. The budget last year was three hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. This year, what the board of selectmen and FinCom recommendation is three hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and seventeen. So it's an increase of fifty, but not an increase of the hundred and seventy thousand that he was asking for. So, and right now where's my scrap paper? After we do snow and ice and the deficit we have on the current budget and ninety thousand for MES water, we have approximately two hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and seven left. Of free cash. Check my math again.
And by increasing that base.
Yep, it's.
It's a recurring. It's a recurring increase, so you really will have a a challenge next year.
Yes. Yep, two eighty-three, three oh seven is one. Do you want, do you want to think about it? We don't have to make this decision right now. Okay.
I was saying, no action.
So no action for now.
I just wanted to bring it up because.
No, I mean, yes.
Start a fire, are you?
So, I mean, the shortfall is concerning and the fact that we have people who are head of these departments, who are experts, are like, I don't know that I have enough to do my job. And that's what they're saying. And we can tell them to make do. But I guess that's why I, to be honest, that's why I want to ask the community, are you open to an override or not? Because if they say nope, then I'm gonna say you're getting three hundred seventy-four thousand dollars and that's it.
And they have.
The community has spoken. That's it.
And they, sorry. And they have other issues too besides staffing. And they have two trucks that are older than me, so.
So they're not very old then.
Well, they're, they're old for.
Can they shave?
They're old for fire trucks.
They are old. You're gonna be dealing with million-dollar replacements.
Repairs for them are ridiculous. And I know that's because it's a lack of fire truck repair shops.
Two years ago, I think, we get hit with very big repair costs.
Past year, they've been expensive.
Peter, question. Um, I know down south and out west, there's fire corporations, you know, where you pay a membership and you pay a fee and then you're part of this corporation and they put your fire out. And then if you don't pay your fee, then the house just burns to ground. But, and I'm not, I'm not proposing that. I'm not proposing that. But is there a way to bill for services that are non-medical related and then go like attach?
I don't know.
And attach the house insurance?
I don't think so.
I'm just saying hypothetical, no way if.
No, I mean, is it a question worth answering? Sure. But I don't, I don't think so. But we can ask.
I think we should look into it. We send the homeowner a bill and have the insurance covered.
Yeah, just like the Medicare rides. That's a, was a good.
Medical transports.
Let's ask.
I think we should ask.
That's perfectly reasonable.
Do you want to have people pay on top of it if property taxes, if something happens to their house?
No, I'm just saying, you know, I don't.
Paying for a fire fund.
You have, you have house insurance.
But you're already paying the fire fund. So if I don't want to, can I exempt myself as a resident from the fire services and get a rebate?
Well, if you live down south and out west.
I don't, I live up the street.
I know. But I'm saying if they come to your house and utilize the services, why not have your insurance pay for it?
I think Chief Coop has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chief Coop. I'm organizing all my papers.
And I'm just thinking, because I always look at liability and optics, I don't think that would be a good look if there are any short staff.
Millville, the Alacant Town.
Might not be a good look there if they honestly couldn't staff a truck and there was a initial response that was lacking and we had kind of discussed the fire, fire.
And the fire department's having concerns with that. I don't know the specifics of it. The fire department's gonna know more about it, but there's a rating specifically for fire departments that, like every five years. And it's a risk if, on a scale of one to ten, if you get to that ten number, then some people might start losing their homeowners' insurance.
Well, they just jack it up.
But if it comes to the point where it's not affordable, I mean, that's another concern. And if we don't have staffing that meets those standards, then I think that puts the town at more liability. And that's just another thing to consider.
Yeah. Or two eighty-three, three oh seven is left. So you have all your budget stuff and the presentation from the chiefs last week. So we can review and discuss. Claudia and Helga, do you have anything to add to the conversation or? Yes, okay. Yes, of course, Andrew. You always can.
So, as it stands right now, without any adjustments, we would be running a deficit of, what is it?
Three twenty-eight.
Yeah, three hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars.
It doesn't include the ninety from MES, so I would actually say it's probably really four twelve.
So four hundred grand in the hole this year.
Yes.
That's a built-in for the next year.
Correct.
Yes.
What's going to stop the, any department from increasing the same levels? So then we have possibly an eight hundred, if not more.
That's, personally, that's why I want to ask the community, do you want an override or not?
But even if we do, the budget is running away right now. You couldn't raise the taxes enough to keep up with it. Because it's four hundred thousand right now in the hole. Next year, if we ask for four hundred thousand, what if we have another four hundred thousand dollar deficit?
Yeah, so.
On top of what we already have.
So we're about halfway where the levy is. So, and I'm not saying like, oh, let's run it up to ten million dollars. Like, um, we do have some space there. Um, and the override that I was thinking in my head is four hundred thousand and then two hundred thousand, six hundred thousand total, and then that's it. Like, we've given a little extra.
The school increased their budget two hundred thousand, over two hundred thousand.
Yep, so it's no, it's a no. I know you, you think we should do that now.
No, no, no. But my point is, is that you don't necessarily have control over all of these things.
We don't. We have to put forth a, um, when we're at town meeting, let everyone know, like, this is where we're at. I mean, do we want to put forth just the three oh's, cut it down? We can do that, Andrew. I don't know how everybody else feels about that. But if we want to say, look, we have a three, we have a four hundred and twelve thousand dollar deficit, we're cutting four hundred and twelve thousand dollars out of the budget.
The other factors here are, we have large capital budget items that will be coming up that we don't have the money for. And we, realistically, we don't and we can't have the money for. Two, revenues will, as Peter was pointing out in his own discussion, in his own analysis, are not expected to be continuing the way they have been.
I agree.
So you're having lower revenues, unmanageable capital expenditures, and a runaway budget. No matter what you do, unless you cut the budget and get it to a balanced thing, there's nothing you can do that would mathematically make it sense for next year for an override.
What are the capital items that you're?
The pipeline.
Yeah.
The town hall, the possibility of the police station, the fire station, which will probably be coming in sooner than later, I'd say.
Okay.
There.
So, couple things. So the town hall, we have ARPA funds which should cover, and Peter's actually making some really great progress there, which should keep it within what we've allocated, which is phenomenal. Um, pipeline, Peter and I were actually talking about that earlier today, and I think um, kind of following, just let me say where this falls, MES. So we have MES water update and then the regional agreement letter, which you already discussed. So in terms of MES water, do we want to have a conversation around the pipeline that we need a written commitment that that's going to be used as a school before we make that investment?
Well, I'd bring up the point of how do we pay for it?
And that would be, well, that's a little bit different. That would be a debt exclusion. And four million over thirty years, over eleven hundred houses is like twenty-four dollars a year or something.
With a four hundred thousand dollar override, possibly each year.
Um.
It's, it's possible.
It's possible. So, what do you want to do, Andrew?
We, A, need to get the budget in line. We can't go to, with a three, over a quarter million dollars deficit in one year. That's just, it's not, it's not reasonable. You can't do that.
So.
No, I'm not saying shut it down.
It's not, it's not be wise. We're, we're a business. The town's a business. We're not generating enough revenue to cover our expenses.
Correct.
It's called bankrupt. Do you know what I mean? So you're not wrong, but we're not able to provide the level of services that are required with the money that it costs that we don't have. You're all right, but you're all wrong too, because we need a fire department, we need it staffed properly, we need a proper police department. Does, does MES generate any money for us in that building? Does it generate revenue for us? So why bother? Why not shut it down? What's the difference in our budget if we have kids just going through the blackstone schools? Is this just a pride thing? Because I know when business is bad, your pride takes a hit.
Yeah.
And you start closing things that don't make you money. Cut those services.
So I'll, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to get a, a thought process or.
Yeah, so.
You know, it's a business.
We talked about.
Generating enough revenue.
We talked about getting the building back as an asset. It would actually be beneficial to the town. We sent out the surveys. I haven't done some in a while. The overwhelming amount of people in Millville want that building open. I can go either way. My kid.
Then that's a requirement of the override.
So.
And then, so take that, if that's what the political point of view of the town is, make the override for the school to stay. If you're trying to put a message to the override, and if that's their opinion, and that's what you're trying to, we're trying to sell, tie it into that. Take the budget that we're wasting on that and put it into departments that actually provide a service.
Yeah, no, for sure.
The, the one thing I would point out to that is that there is a debt on that building that we'd have to pay back and.
About here, a thousand on a heating system?
Yeah. The other thing is, is, yeah.
Roof. It's one, it's one and a half million altogether between the two.
So what's your return on investment? So what's it going to cost us to keep it open as opposed to paying that off? Like, we're spending money to keep it open.
The risk of trying to get somebody is that you don't have a guaranteed buyer.
No.
So you can't just, you can put on the market, but that doesn't mean it's going to sell. And in the meantime, we would still have to upkeep that building.
Yeah.
So it's not a guarantee of like, oh, we sell this and all our problems are solved. There's still the risk of what happens next.
And the other variable to it too is the impact to home valuations. I mean, the first thing you look at when you buy a house in the town is, is there a school in the town?
I don't think Millville schools have been a prop for my property valuing for many years. I don't, I don't think that's been helping us at all.
It could have an effect on the assessors' valuations though.
Sure.
Which that would also make the revenue problem even worse if our valuations go down.
Correct.
Well, we have a lot to think about. Um, anything else on the budget? I guess, so Ian, like I kind of shepherd the conversation. I don't have any strong opinions yet. That's why I was kind of thinking that, that's why I put, the way I was thinking is, quote this year on free cash. We ask the town, do you want an override or not? If it's yes, good. If it's no, good. If it's no, we go back to everyone and say, this is what you have, this is, we, to be honest, we could do their budget. We could go back to everyone and tell BMR, you get three point four million. I need three point eight, you're getting three point four. You're getting this much for this, you're getting this much for that. We wouldn't even need to have these meetings, to be honest, because we would know what we're spending. But that's why I want to ask the community, and here are resounding yes, are resounding no. And then I think that guides us into where we want to go. That's, that was my, how I was thinking about it.
And if I may, one other thing on the revenue side is though, is that we do have, as it was mentioned, an aging population. They're on fixed incomes. If you raise taxes, can they survive? And if they, you know, get foreclosed, then what happens?
That's all I mean, Andrew. It's just that.
Yeah.
I agree with you a thousand percent.
Yeah.
That's the logical thing and that's the truth. They're not going to pay for an override. And honestly, when we have the town meetings proposals, it's packed. And it's the aging population that shows up.
Yep.
And their vote is heard.
Yes, for sure.
We're just spinning circles.
Well, I know, but I'm just pointing that out was like, even if we got that override passed through.
Not the solution.
It wouldn't be a long-term solution. It would just cause other problems that we don't have.
Initial problem, that we're not generating enough revenue. We're not, our revenues aren't increasing at the same, the same rate that's been.
Yeah, no, for sure.
Hey, grants. Hey, grants.
I think, so I don't think grants is really the answer for everything either. It's, they're helpful.
Say it was the.
Combination.
But I think.
It's another spoke in the wheel.
No, for sure. It's another, absolutely, Jerry, you're right. It is, it's an additional source. Um, yeah. Peter, anything to add? Peter's anti-override, just FYI.
Yeah. I've been proud of the fact that I've never had to deal with an override and I've fought them along the way in my, sitting in other seats. So two fifty of this, three twenty-eight is school-related, last year and this year, okay? And the town has some say in the matter, but the say might be contradicting what the other town says. And then you deal with the unknown of this, you know, special town meeting, but maybe that's an experience you want to enjoy. You've not, as a body, finance committee and board of selectmen stood firm against, stood firm for sticking to guidance last year and this year, and here we are. Back in the, before I came to Millville, you had a school that required two hundred and fifty grand out of the hundred and twenty-five that was available under proposition two and a half. So that math didn't work back then, and you wound up cutting services like a library, a COA, and your trash pickup. So that was painful for people. Um, and then they paid for the trash pickup personally. So I don't know if they made out on that deal. Separately, you have, so I'm just unleashing a little bit, if I could, okay? So separately, you have thirty grand plus ninety grand in this draft warrant that sounds like you want to put into this budget for MES water, which is treating water for a half, for a dozen people, i.e. it's not a public water supply. You don't really have to do it if you choose not to. But we're doing it in part because you want people, students back in the building. That's a cost. That's a decision to spend money that you technically don't have to based on MasDEP rules, okay? So there's that. On the, on the pipeline, as the, I'm the chair of the capital committee. I don't want to be. Um, and I'm crappy at it. And there's, we should have probably posted for tonight because we have some members of it here. And we're gonna have to have a meeting to vote on the stabilization things here, probably at your next meeting. But if, when I am asked to vote, and I'm a voting member, uh, for a pipeline, my vote would be no, because I believe there are cost efficient, cost-effective treatments that can be done to meet the future yet-to-be-determined needs for PFAS, using other alternatives with the existing system, which works just fine, regardless of what anybody else says. So I'm going to vote no unless somehow I have an epiphany. And, but I will continue to push for it. And we have a million dollars that we're in process of providing the application for MasDEP. And separately, we just put in for two million from the feds. Unlikely to get it, but we put in for it because you keep, you can't hit if you don't swing. So we're swinging at that. So maybe there's three million and the town stuck with two million. Still, I'm pretty sure I wouldn't vote for. Because again, I think the system can manage it, okay? In spite of what other people may think. So anyway, you've got challenges here. The other challenges, yeah, the fire department, you know, the fire department, you, all the nonsense that you see on Facebook and all the difficult conversations we've had, but you know what? They get the call, like, and I was having issues back and forth on some things with Foster and Chief Lillard, and I was going back at them on something. And literally, within an hour and a half, I'm getting the call from Chief Coop, who's on-site at a house fire, a complete house fire. And you know, there was mutual aid from all these towns and folks really rose to that occasion. And you, your chief, I was going to do this under my TA thing, your chief managed that thing like a master, because there are a bazillion moving parts managing equipment, personnel from all communities, making sure all of the parts are moving in the right direction. And your chief and your crew from Millville did an outstanding job of containing that fire. And Chief Coop and the police were also there, uh, doing a fine job, including dealing with the individual involved and making sure that he was safe. And, you know, the, the follow-up steps that he would have to deal with were put in motion. So, uh, you know, Millville stepped to that thing in spite of all of its challenges. And it's, uh, you know, kudos to all of them. So there, I, I don't know what else to say. You've, you want to stand firm? Stand firm. You can do that. Um, and, and it will be painful, but it's, uh, you know, and it's an evolving thing. The next time you'll see maybe a different number, maybe depending on when we get to this, what you want to do on the, you know, the MES water, where, where geographically you want it. It's geography at this stage, I'd call it.
So just a point on that water line. Um, now I did watch the fire department and some of those trucks sucking out of that pond up there on Central Street and bringing the water up. It is, uh, it's like a dance. It's very dedicated. It's a masterpiece. But bringing the water line in has an opportunity to do two things possibly. Uh, help us develop part of the town that that water line's coming in and bring us in fire hydrants.
Up that way.
Yeah.
That would bring us some water. That would help us fight fires.
Yeah.
For sure.
So I'm, uh, I'm, I'm not a no on this water line. Might help the town grow.
Yeah.
I'm a no, because I'm focused on it just to fix the MES water situation. That, that's my focus.
But collateral duty would help us develop that area. But collateral duty would help us develop that area of town.
I agree.
So I mean, I think there's some positives.
I agree. Maybe I'm too myopic.
I mean, I'm ready to have a bake sale, try to raise some money.
But to your point.
I just said cake pops.
Cake pops, yep.
Uh, but to your point about the potential for like development, are, is the, because I don't think it's commercial. So would there be land available for a subdivision or something like that even up there?
Possible.
Okay.
I don't know.
I know, but I'm saying like, that would be something to, because if, I mean, then again, you still have to try to get a developer.
Or result on it.
And, and that's the driving factor for Uxbridge to get the water serviced up that way. And cooking up to us is an additional benefit for that. But they're, they're looking for development up there. The area on their side as well as ours has no blast, so, no blast restrictions.
We may be able to renegotiate that, that ballpark figure that we have. If they have a little bit more enticement along that water line, and we have a bit more enticement, that number might come down. Bake sale. Joe, you're pretty quiet over there. For our new guy, it's.
Take it all in.
You want to help bake?
Sure, I'll bake, absolutely. I'm the new guy, I'm just sitting here.
Taking it all in.
We only have like one more meeting before the annual town meeting. So I feel like if we're gonna be moving the budget, two hundred or three hundred thousand dollars, we should, we either do it now or we're not doing it. Do we want to say that the BMR is, it's now three point five million? That's line item two sixty-seven. On page eight. Picking out the two oh seven. That's there. What, is that our guidance, Peter? The five, three, five, six, three?
Uh, no, that was last year's budget. Our guidance was a hundred and one thousand.
Above that.
Less, no, less than the three, seven, four, four that they're asked. So we were at, our guidance was three, six, four, three, I think, and that would be in one of the earlier iterations.
Three, six, four, three. So do we want to knock off a hundred thousand there? We'll be going to super town meeting, probably, just for aware. So that would lower the deficits.
Hundred grand.
Hundred grand. So what is it? Let's look at this again.
Two twenty-seven.
Two twenty-seven?
Two twenty, probably a little less, like two hundred, I'd say, because it's a decrease of like a hundred thirty.
Yeah.
Could be like two hundred then.
So three twenty-seven, five oh three. So if we knock off, so two twenty-seven. And then are there any, are there any other budgets that you would want to hold firm on? So is there anything else that's really, I didn't really see any other, other ones. The only one that jumped out to me as a huge increase was fire. But that was, if you look at how it was funded in previous years, you'll see it was like, I don't know, like a hundred thousand dollars or something. So I understand the big jumps. But that is causing us to have a over quarter of a million dollar deficit as well, so that's. I don't see any other big jumps.
Just out of curiosity, do we have a timeline up for, for the Old Town Hall? Like, when that project would be?
No, we don't, no, yeah, no.
Okay.
They did have a.
An update, so I, it, it, just respond to it, no, okay.
I was just wondering if that was, okay, because, because this is an expense too, leasing. This building.
Yeah, Old Town Hall has an, is an expense.
No, no, this building. We're leasing it.
Yes, we're leasing.
Which is an expense, and also that's coming up soonish.
Twenty-six.
Yeah.
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 Twenty-six.
What's the savings there annually if we dump this lease?
It's like twenty grand.
Yeah, it's not huge, but it's an excess, yeah.
Plus costs, so.
We could save twenty grand off each department's.
We could.
That would be huge. So do we take in a hundred off the school?
For it.
I know. So Andrew's for it. I will be for it with Andrew.
The guy, what do you propose? Right on the spot, look at him sweat.
I know, right?
Millville matters news tomorrow, buddy.
Oh, yeah.
I'll make it easy for you. I'll be for it too.
Okay.
Oh, peer pressure now.
Wow.
Richard?
Oh, I don't know. I'll be making cake pops.
I just say that because my daughter's been making them for a fundraiser for a school. Because she won a competition, so to go to nationals, she's doing fundraising.
I'm just gonna have to learn how to make cake pops first. I'll be over at BBT learning how to do it.
Quick question.
Jerry's gonna let me come in on a Saturday.
Uh, these aren't huge amounts, obviously, but just out of the town clerk administrative salaries.
That's adding eight hours for the.
Yeah, is that needed, or is that because they wanted to train them?
Oh, that's needed. That's, I mean, they're, they're, that's a busy department with limited resources. So it's, it's sixty-five hundred bucks for another eight hours for that person.
I know. They did go, go without a town assistant town clerk at one point, and they said it was okay at town meeting too. So I mean, that's why I'm wondering, is there things that have changed?
Assistant town clerk, kind of like, I know it's an elected position, so.
So the town clerk's an elected position.
Assistant town clerk isn't.
The assistant town clerk is appointed by the town clerk, yeah. And it's eight hours, and she's been asking for years for doubling that up to at least sixteen hours. Because, you know, the, the stuff they have to deal with keeps increasing, you know, without funding. So mandates of the effort and reporting requirements by the Secretary of State and all that is quite significant.
And the other thing I'll say too is like, I don't know if you saw for elections, but people are like, where am I voting? What's going on? Like, our website is not up to date. So if the town clerk could work on that.
And she does. She's very helpful, and she manages the sign. She spent two hours fiddling with the sign out front because it wasn't working.
I know I do website updates. I do my own website, it's for my company, so I can help. She wants to show me how to do stuff.
Start a website committee.
My God, please no more.
Don't nominate Joe.
The, was it, was that previously always done by the town clerk? I want to say it was like the.
The website updates?
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
I don't know, but that's part of our new person, Diane, the new Diane's, Sherry replacement. It, it's one of the items on her dance card to work with the other Diane and segue, you know, taking a fresh look at it. So I'm, I'm hoping we get that sorted out.
Perfect, great.
But if you were looking for me to do it, that's not.
Well, there's just a lot of things, I understand. I know there's, um, there are things that are gonna be out of date, and, and, you know, some things can't be helped, but it's, there are some things that's out of date, and it's embarrassing.
What if we give you a laptop, Peter, and you can just work from the boat?
I have a laptop.
He does do that.
Well, I, I generally don't.
Update it right from the boat.
Yeah.
Hotspot.
Yeah.
Okay, so we are going to reduce the school budget by.
Yeah, two, three, so the, the guidance number was three, six, four, three, four, six, seven. Three million, six hundred forty-three, four, sixty-seven. If you want me to put that back.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Do we all agree?
Take a vote on that?
Yes, I will. Um, I'll make the motion to align the school budget with the guidance provided by the town administrator. Looking for a second.
Second. Everybody's jumping.
Andrew was a little faster, so I'll go with Andrew. Any further discussion? Seeing now, I'll call for the vote. Matthew?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer's, aye. Joe?
Aye.
Okay.
Pressure was on there for a minute.
I know.
That's all right.
Full move.
So, well.
Just like that, we forgot about the fire.
Well, Andrew's right, that we are, oh, like, the budget's running away. What I would like to do is like cut spending and then do like a teeny override, like, I know you're still, she's still talking override. Because inflation has out, like, our inflation and other things have driven costs in a way that the prop two and a half is not catching up. Do I think it needs to be a million dollars? No. But a couple hundred thousand, I feel, would give some wiggle room and be helpful.
Yeah, you had record inflation in like a year.
Yeah, like, all's all that money injected into the economy during COVID, and then when it stopped, it just, so, that's finance right there. Yes, no, so, yeah, so we can do that. Right, exactly. So that's the.
Pay sixty dollars more.
Right, so once we do the math overall, like, so the math that I use, for example, on the, on the pipeline. So we, we know we have roughly like eleven hundred houses. So say we did an override of four hundred thousand and divided by eleven hundred houses. So this is flat. So my house, yeah, so my house is on the higher side, so I pay more. So other people with smaller houses, they pay less. But the aver, that's not right. Oh, I, I came up, that's not right.
Three, six, can you change?
Divided by eleven hundred. I think I did minus eleven hundred, and that was not right. And everyone's looking at me, and it's like so much math under pressure.
Thirty bucks a month or something.
It's three hundred and sixty-three dollars a year on average. So, yeah, so then divided by twelve.
Per household.
Per household, sorry. So thirty dollars would be the average per month, per household, for four hundred thousand. Yeah.
I'll donate my salary.
And that covers none.
Your daytime salary.
No, no, the nighttime salary. I don't make any in there either.
So that'd be, so like, I don't know, so for some people it'll be like sixty, for other people it'll be like twenty-five, maybe ten, you know, I don't know. So, I mean, it's, like, that's why I'm thinking like, four hundred thousand, like, that's not awful?
Well, what's that compared to, what's the overall income from real estate taxes?
It is, we have that right here. Five, six.
Yeah, so.
What line is it, Peter?
It's, uh.
Here we go.
There you go. Five, nine, eight, seven.
So it says six million, and you're trying to get four hundred thousand.
Five, nine, eight, so, so six million from property taxes.
Yeah, so you.
Increase it. Less than one or two. Which is right around the same amount.
Yeah. And then the, so the levy, so that's two and a half percent of all the value, and that's roughly like eleven million. And I meant to do this analysis, but I just have a, because I, I knew we were pushing this off quite a bit. So out of the eleven million, we're raising like six, sort of like, kind of a half. Now, you don't want to be at ten, because say, real estate prices fall, and then the levy is not eleven, then it's nine, and you spent ten. You can't spend ten. You have to spend nine. So, like, we don't, we don't want to be like close to it, but that's why I think four hundred thousand next year, maybe two hundred thousand the year after, and then, and then we manage the costs. So Peter, do you want to communicate to Dr. DeFalcow that we switched his budget? And I don't know, Andrew, is there anything that you would see in the line-by-line budget that you would? I guess, would anyone see anything in the line-by-line budget that would change their opinion? For me, I think not, actually.
I mean, the only thing I was thinking of when I asked to see it was to fine-tune certain things, because there's always, there's always something you can.
Yeah.
Finagle.
Yeah.
But if we're doing this, I mean. I'd still like to see it, obviously, but like.
Yeah, so, and, and this will be tweaked further, as, you know, particularly on those two schools, you know, right? And keep in mind, I did add the forty for the fire department, right? Then we had that lengthy discussion.
All right.
There's not a lot of other fat there.
So that gives us left over after we do the two twenty-seven override, the ninety for MES water, the forty-five thousand for snow and ice, and the thirty-five hundred we sneaked into the highway. It's three hundred eighty-three thousand, three hundred and seven is left. So a hundred thousand for a road brings us to two eighty-three. And then I think we would put maybe, I don't know if we'd still put anything in highway, I still, I'd want to think about that. And then the rest would go into stabilization. But that put two eighty-three into stabilization, put us right around with a one point three million dollar mark. If not quite there.
The, the other thing is, is that if you have a bigger savings pool, you can finagle at easier. You can, you can do stuff, one-time cost type things of.
This year we'll do a road. We're gonna wait two years and do another.
Yeah, or something like with buildings or whatever. You can do that if you have a savings pool. You can do that without really killing yourself.
Yep.
Which is something, you know, which would be good to have. I was gonna bring this up later, but this kind of relates to the budget.
Okay.
But the, because I know we're gonna talk about the van driver thing. I was thinking if that could be reduced. Because if, I, I think, I mean, I don't know what the board's opinion is, but I would say to keep the one van. And then at that point, I would say one van driver, and then you don't need anything else.
So we, we do have many letters from the townspeople for, for that. I will say, though, that I went back and watched the, it was March seventh, twenty twenty-two, that we said, we'll get you the new van, you need to sell the old one. Tina was in that meeting. So I don't know what was unclear. I don't know if she wants to come to the meeting next time, and we want to kind of table taking the vote back for now, and have her come to the next meeting, because she was there. So I sort of feel like.
She didn't listen.
That, or it's like, well, we'll get, I don't know. Well, let's get the new van, and then we'll wait and ask if we can keep both.
I kind of get the, the idea, the versatility of having the two vans. I mean, they're two.
And we do have an aging population, which we keep discussing.
Well, they are two completely different and unique vehicles, you know.
Yeah, they are.
One is on a bigger truck chassis, it's capable of holding more capacity. I think, there might be a wheelchair lift in there. Jerry, is there a wheelchair lift in there? What about the, what about the minivan? Does that have a wheelchair lift? They both have them.
It's made by Bron.
They both have them.
But it's not.
But it's a seven-seater, that's.
But the larger van, can that hold like two wheelchairs and then a combination? See, there's more versatility. I'm kind of in favor of keeping both vans, and you don't need to drive both of them at the same time, so.
I am too.
I'm kind of in favor of keeping both.
If we.
Didn't seem to hurt the budget much either.
Well, it, repairs will.
Mr. Hertz, would you like to come up to the table? Or do you think you can yell from there, we can hear you? All right.
Being a member on the COA, I believe the two vans are needed, because the smaller new van is very difficult for handicap.
Okay.
With wheelchairs. The other thing, they're, I think they're almost all paid, so just be maintaining them. And again, one person has to go to a hospital visit, the other people, it's, it's flexibility. Thing is paid. And to keep, the second one would make it easier if you've got a group of people that are going to a function. So I'd like to put in my two cents and say, please keep the two vans. Any questions for me?
I don't have any.
All right, you gonna have an open forum later?
We always have public forum.
Good. I'll be back.
Okay.
All right.
That sounds like a promise.
And a threat.
So I'm kind of good with the two vans. I think Matthew's good with the two vans.
I'm good with the two vans.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the things I spent a lot of time looking at when I was looking at all the, the new emails, the new emails and looking through all of the, the letters. Be it the letter that there's your side, or even the individual letters here, that the two vans is, I, I think the two vans is definitely the way to go. There's, there's no reason we can't do that, I don't think, right?
I would point out that you have three people for two vans, employees. That is a cost that I don't know if is necessary to have a coordinator for two vans. The other thing is, is that the smaller van is aging. There will be repairs in the, and if you don't use as much, then the repairs are gonna come in more frequently, and they're gonna be more serious. That's gonna be a cost that, A, isn't even in the budget, really. We beefed it up, but that's not gonna cover, tires and brakes go on one or both of the cars. It's over budget. Those are huge expenses.
I'm also gonna say this, and I think we have an emergency management committee here in town, and they may like to have both vans. Because you can still leverage one in the event of an emergency. You have a fire, yeah, people in, you gotta transport them. I used to be in a committee, and we would leverage school buses for that purpose, maybe in part of the town-wide planning, so I think we should, two of them.
I just, it's, it's gonna be a cost. And then how much?
No.
You just do.
Millville Service.
Sorry, what?
Have Millville Service, slap a sticker on it. Sponsored by Millville Service, do some repairs.
A bank, like, you mean anybody in a bank?
Or what?
On the side of it, so the van can go around all the places they go.
I don't know any bank that sponsors a van, but.
There's a.
There's uh, nine of them do it up at B V T.
Banks that sponsor senior vans or school vans?
School vans.
Yeah, there's, there would be a difference. I don't know about how that would work.
It's, you know, it's worth, it's worth a question, but
And I can say, for the banking industry, they're not exactly looking to expand their donations or anything like that, especially the local ones, they're not doing that. Yeah, they're, they're I know it is not. But yeah, that, that is, that is not something that, they're, they're keeping what they're doing, but they're not looking to expand anything, as far as I'm aware, so.
Seven, all right, nine. One other thing, if I may
Yeah, sure.
Um, as far as the, as far as the maintenance goes
Yep.
I did talk to the folks up at B V T, and there would be an opportunity to be able to do routine maintenance. And
Thank you.
where you have two of them, you can be able to take the other one and put it up there, you'd schedule the timing that you would need to do it. If it's a brake job and things like that, that's exactly what they like to do. So you could do that if you had a second one.
Yeah.
I'm only advocating that is hopefully we keep down the costs of maintenance, because there's no charge for labor, it's just for parts. If you need a brake job, it's just gonna cause you for breaks. So they, they said they'd be willing to help with that.
And if they call Imperial, we'll give them a hand on the parts.
There you go.
Perfect. All right.
I will point out, I did talk to Tina about, I followed up with my question about the breakdown of the three, the two drivers and the van coordinator, and the van corner, van coordinator is only working six hours a week and they're making sixteen bucks an hour, and they have other responsibilities on top of just, I mean, Richard, you might know more about what the van coordinator does, but they do other things besides, you know, they drive the vans themselves, they also are responsible for training and stuff. So I think there are different responsibilities that we have, that should be counted for regarding those breakdowns. I mean, the total is thirteen, maybe thirteen thousand between those three employees, and I think in the overall scheme of the budget, it just doesn't, I know we're all about pitching pennies, but at the same time, they're doing a lot more work than they're being paid for, so I don't see why we need to cut.
I think we all, I, I mean, it's four to one or three to two, so.
I didn't realize it. But I just want to point out, this is
No, that's helpful.
Plus also, I'm a, an alum of Tri-County, I could probably talk to somebody up there, they also have an auto repair program up there that may be able to, to assist with the upkeep of the Millville vans.
Okay, sounds good. I think, are we done with the last budget draft? I think we made our big, our big move.
You know, I can see like Burger King sponsoring it, you know, you can have it your way, right on the side of that van.
Okay, we're gonna move on to more articles, unless anyone strongly objects? Okay. And this is like the longest meeting ever.
I want it eight thirty.
I'm way past that.
Mine too.
It was Matthew's fault, he dragged it out.
Sorry, sorry, I said what I wanted to say.
So anything on, let me see, so I guess the only thing, do we have to add a, oh, here we go, general steel, can we move the order of the articles or no?
Of course you can.
Great.
It's, it's, it's your warrant, you can do whatever you want.
Okay, so, um, I personally like to do like monetary bills, snow and ice, and then move things to stabilization next. And the reason why I like to put every, move the stabilization articles next, so those are six, seven, and eight, is because to take money out is a two-thirds vote, so if someone says, hey, I think that we should not cut a hundred thousand dollars from the school, I want you to take it out, they have to take it out of stabilization, it requires a two-thirds vote and not a simple majority. And so if someone wants to say, I think we should spend, you know, an extra hundred thousand dollars on highway, or whatever it is, that's why, it's like, it's more than people, like, I feel, when it's like, I don't want it to be fifty-one to forty-eight, I want it to be sixty-six to ten. So it's like, look, this is what everybody wanted, so, so that's my opinion, and we don't have to do it that way, but that's how I would prefer to do it, but if I'm the only one.
So what are you saying? You want to move article ten ahead of article six?
Move article eight to article, after, to article four. So eight becomes four.
Okay, so just like four, articles one through five are pretty, they're just standard recurring articles, right?
The order is fine.
So, so the, the question really, the, maybe you might ask is whether the, the fist, the article ten, which is the budget, whether you move that ahead of the stabilization fund ones?
No.
No, because you don't want people to tap into the stabilization.
I don't, I want to move free cash
You want to move it out and not available.
So, well, it is available, but for a two-thirds vote.
Okay, so then they vote to move it out of stabilization where it's already
So then the free cash isn't just available as a simple majority.
So you're kind of good with this order?
Yes, I'm, I apologize, the order is great.
Okay.
Okay, so then, I, it's, I'm tired and it's hot in here.
It is, yeah.
Um, all right, so we have monetary increases, bills prior year, snow and ice, highway department chapter ninety cable license fees, and then we'll move money into highway stabilization, capital stabilization, general stabilization, um, O P E B.
Probably not, I think we're pretty well-funded there, actually, based on the liability that we don't show yet.
Okay, so this is
From what I understand.
Okay, and then we go to the budget?
Yes.
Which we've already discussed. And then we do B M R, O P E B, that's typically twenty-five, twenty-six thousand.
That's right, but again, we have, we will take no action on that if they vote the budget, because it's in the budget as a line item, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yep.
Um, and then we have school committee stipends.
Yep.
Cable appropriation.
Yep.
Um, the change to the bylaw for the board of health member as board health agents.
Yep.
Um, the B V T warrant for ten thousand, oh, for ten million, sorry, amended by its actions, but for us, that doesn't, we don't pay ten million.
No, that's the total.
The debt service would be about the same as the, the debt service we're paying for B V T now is like twelve grand, eleven, twelve grand, and that's going away if I, soon, like, this may be the last year, and the debt service on this will be about twelve or fourteen grand.
Twelve, thirteen, eight, and that's gonna be the difference, and it will not be effective until F Y, um
Twenty-seven, twenty-six.
Okay.
Doesn't affect
So
But I, but I must disclose that I've seen some discussion of other towns on this, I know there was talk, but it's not reflected in the warrant article, that should M S B A money, should they be accepted in the M S B A program, get reimbursement of some portion of the ten million? That's not reflected in here as a, as a to take place type of a thing. And there's some communities have concerns about that, that have a larger debt service issue, so I'm just pointing that out.
So what could we get money back?
Well, we'll reduce the debt service. It, this doesn't require them to use the money against the ten million, basically.
Okay.
Yep, I got it. All right, um, M E S water operations funding, so, um, this is for the increase in ninety thousand dollars, and this is mainly in here, because right now, the way that the regional agreement is written, it's an op, straight operational cost. I know that we all agree that, well, actually, Joe, this might be new for you, um, the way that the regional agreement is written, so anything under twenty-five thousand and over a certain time period is considered an operational cost. That's what it says. Water operations typically falls in that framework. So when I first got on the board of selectmen, we were not paying the water operations bills because of that framework. Since then, and I did feel this way at the beginning, but I didn't want to rock the boat my first year as a board of selectmen too much, because I already rocked it kind of a lot. So I was quiet on this point, but I feel like we should provide water. I don't feel good, like, my kids were in preschool there, they're so little, and they're asking, hey, please have water, and we're like, no. So I feel like we should pay this, but that was the, what we discussed with the letter earlier that talks about all kinds of weird stuff and not about operational costs. So I guess this may go away if we get the letter squared away. Or Peter, will that not happen?
So this, this will go away if you choose to go away and put it in the operating budget, number one. This will also go away if you see some further information from town council. I did forward earlier to all, and you may not have had a chance to look at, I have copies of it for you here, which you're not gonna read because it's for lengthy, um, with council, analyzing the letter that's received and addressing this particular issue, which is one, whether the article, um, should remain, and what their advice is in terms of the reading of the regional agreement, which in the past, in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, council reads the regional agreement that, yes, indeed, the regional agreement does not exclude M E S water operating costs as an operating cost, and therefore should be borne by the district. That's the prior opinions of Millville's Town Council K P Law, okay?
And of another town member who was here at the meeting who said, is also a lawyer, is like, and I was like, well, and he said specifically, we have things in there this clearly, so there is no ambiguity.
Yeah.
That's why it's written that way.
And, and so, the explanation for this warrant article is an educational explanation for the voters, and the voters were the ones who approved the regional agreement. And so if you deem M E S water costs as not, as the, not B M R operational costs, as defined in the regional agreement that they approved, this gives those voters the ability to weigh in on waiving that part of it, if you will, it's, it's so, that's all. And, and it's a bit of a spitting contest, and, and again, council has to address it. The letter that, that their lawyer provided, as Jen described, you know, we're not disputing that we own the water system. We're not disputing that we must provide potable water. We're not disputing that we have a long-term lease, we're not disputing that we're trying to get out of the regional agreement, we're not, you know, all these things.
Of what a public water supply is, which is twenty-six people present, sorry, twenty-five people for sixty days or more. Like, it's, it was weird, I don't know what, what they're, I don't know why they wrote it this way.
We're, we're only talking about clarity of whose burden the operating costs are, as defined in the regional agreement. That's all. So I've said all I said. So you can choose not to have that in, or you could choose to
Okay, so you can talk about the next meeting. And then by law changes, I think people losing steam.
Well, so the planning board's here to talk about these changes.
I have not been here for two hours and forty-three, but it's just a
Come on up.
Get this going.
Hey, Jason, nearly five-ten Chestnut Hill Planning Board member. I will hopefully make this quick and easy. We would like to present four warrant articles, we are going to have a public reading on four fifteen, so we wanted to instruct, or at least warn the board. I can go individual, or I can give just a quick synopsis on all, on all four of them.
Synopsis is great.
Sure, so we just want to make some clarifications in the Ovale District, that's the first warrant article. Second article is really as simple as this, permitted as a hominid. We have different definitions of the same word, more times than we can actually count, because we couldn't count that high. The word permitted as opposed to permitted is as simple as this warrant article goes, and I actually spent more time talking about it just because it's funny. The third one is site, site plan review text, and again, is just making obvious mistakes in the bylaws more legible and easier to understand and taking out ambiguity. And last article, number four, planning board membership and duties is basically, we seek to flesh out planning board section to formally establish the planning board's memberships and duties, um, which is just a long way of saying about an associate member being on the zoning board. And that's really it. So like I said, we have a public hearing on the fifteenth, we're gonna discuss it, have a public debate if there is any, and then we'll be making a vote to submit these to you guys for the warrant, that was easy.
Thank you for your hard work.
I got a question. I actually do.
Mr. Selectman?
Article nineteen says, section one, get your readers out.
Thank you.
That's rough. Back in the basement, you go.
We're gonna get you a, a manners pamphlet too, sir. We're mellowing, son.
Section, section one, says, no changes to the approved site plan shall be authorized unless the planning board makes a written determination that the changes are minor and do not require public caring. What are minor changes compared to major changes?
Anything that's gonna change the existing plan that's not curbing, what vegetation, small, minor things that don't affect the overall layout.
Should you add that here, and minor changes are defined as?
Not specifically, it is still a little bit ambiguous, but I guess that from Dylan was here, Dylan lasted two and a half hours, tried, Dylan's a lot smarter and better looking than I am on this stuff. I think that's a common term
Okay.
with people that do this regularly. So I don't think, I, I think, again, it was simplifying some exaggerated terms.
Gotcha. Didn't want to waste your time, not ask you a question.
Wow.
All right.
He's so handsome too. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna stay longer.
Okay, you can leave whenever you want, this is not a hostage situation.
I think you should stay, just, you know.
I'll be seven hours at work, so I think I
Keep eyes on Junior over here.
That's your job tonight, Brown.
All right. Then we, good night. And then amend the bylaws, so this is personnel, so we have to change the hourly rates, so to make sure we pay people fairly, and this is every single year.
Yep, so that was increased from last year's by three percent of each.
Anyone have any questions or concerns?
So your next meeting, you'll be voting
Voting on them.
on these guys, okay?
Ratification of police local one seventy?
So Chief Coop is here to talk through that, and
He's like, I hate all of you making me stay this late.
Mutual aid agreement, and, you know, you have to, you approve it and sign it, and Chief, if you want to come up and explain it better than I am, but I did review it carefully, and it's a pretty well-written, I was surprised, it's a pretty well-written document that covers all the things, you know, we can get out in thirty days if we don't like it, we, the, the liability exposure is covered for folks and things that are done, that our guys are doing at the, the instructions of another, you know, department, things like that, so.
Oh, wait, here we go, I'm like, I know I just had it. Okay. It's quite substantial.
Yes, I'm sorry, are we doing the mutual aid or the C B A?
Mutual aid, I mean, I don't really have to talk about the
We're doing both, I, I, I miss, miss Fergie, so I was talking about the mutual aid.
Okay.
The collective bargaining agreement, that, that reflects the memorandum of agreement terms, you know, the lengthy process we went through for which you were updated, the collective bargaining agreement, this is just to ratify it. I had you defer from last time, because the chief had one question on it, but we've resolved what we wanted to do, so there are three, three of these for you all to sign.
Okay.
Okay? And it's the one signed by the union rep, the, the union rep and the union president.
So is there any concerns on the negotiating agreement? We've had several exchanges on this.
Nothing's changed since we last
Right, no. Correct. Whatever.
Looking for a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the updated police mutual aid agreement. Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Matthew.
No, wait, you, you were approving the collective bargaining agreement you asked for, yes? for, yes?
Yes, collective bargaining.
Oh, we're doing collective, oh, sorry. My bad.
You can make a new motion.
I'm, I'll.
Withdraw?
I'll withdraw my motion. I'll make a new motion to ratify the Millville Police Local One Seventy Collective Bargaining Agreement effective July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Matthew.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
Andrew.
Aye.
Aye. Joe?
Aye.
You abstain.
Oh, I abstained, okay. It looked pretty cut and dry when I read it, so.
Because you haven't been part of the negotiations.
Gotcha.
I don't.
You could vote yes, but you don't have to.
All right.
I guess, well, do you want to vote yes?
Yeah, I read through it. I, I agree with you. Yai.
So sorry, do you want me to take your vote back? Do you want to vote aye or you want to say abstained?
Uh, I'll vote aye.
Okay.
I read through it.
It's five o.
Pretty easy.
Perfect.
Well, the.
So, but he wouldn't sign it, so Roland would just be a blank.
No, no, yeah, but no, would it have to be changed with the vice chairman? Because there's a new one.
Oh, yeah, Andrew's not vice chair?
Oh, unless you want to be vice chair.
I, I, no, because it's already.
Because it's been previously done.
They all signed it and that was ready for you other than the holdup last time.
I don't know, I'm just signing it.
I think it's.
Yeah, so it's from prior, not so much.
Okay.
And this is Roland Barrett, so.
That's all right, that stays blank.
Yep, okay.
Because of timing.
All right, in consideration of updated mutual police, updated police mutual aid agreements. So, over to you.
So this document was brought to the Chiefs Association attention maybe a year and a half ago. There was only a few chiefs on it. They were actually still sitting and some towns wanted to get in, wanted to get out of it, so they started reviewing it with legal staff and they rewrote it to some extent and it basically covers offices that come into Millville to deal with something like our situation we had in the summer.
Fire, yep.
With that guy shooting and you know, it reduces them to have no liability, they're just dealing with under insurance plan and just covers everybody when they're doing stuff that it gives them the right to act under the town's bylaws, whatever the case may be, and it just protects everyone when they're helping each other. It's a pretty standard document and they just need signatures from myself and you folks just so we can continue to be part of it.
Here's the signature page, chief, and it has signature of chief executive or elected official. So I think Jen would sign the very first one, then there's, so you might sign the bottom one, all right?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean.
And you can fill in Millville and the date, how's that?
Okay.
So a question, chief.
Vote on it.
So this mutual agreement that covers piles of arrests, chapter ninety enforcement ability or?
Covers everything.
Covers everything? Does the town clerk need to swear all those folks in back in the old days or is this, this covers it?
No, we had over a, probably, we had a hundred personnel on that shooting on.
Yeah.
Two SWAT teams, canines.
Back in the day, years ago, you didn't, this date might go, you used to have to swear everybody in, yeah, all right.
Yep, they're all working under the color of their department badge. They come in here, they've, the, the only one thing they have to be sent here in an official protocol, so you request or they're dispatched, that's the only thing. If somebody was a self-responder and then did something and there was no record of them, yeah, he'd have a problem.
Liability's on them, right?
Okay. So provided they follow the process, okay. All right, so looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the updated police mutual aid agreement.
Thank you, Matthew. Looking for a second?
I'll second it.
I second it.
A little faster.
You know what, give it to Joe, he's the new guy. You know, he's the new guy.
Any further discussion? Yes?
Uh, this won't impact like any budget or anything like that, right? It would, wow, so, okay, just making sure.
What it does do is if somebody is injured, they're covered on their town's insurance policy.
That's what I was thinking, but I was just.
So sort of helps our budget.
Sort of helps us.
Okay.
Watch out for the potholes in the street.
See, any further discussion?
No.
Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Matthew?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye, Joe?
Aye.
All right. We're cranking now.
Yep.
Everyone's like, I want to go.
Well, Joe's been doing all this talking all night.
I know. Sorry to keep you guys so late.
Give you these two for.
Does everybody else, does the rest of the board sign this, Peter?
Find yourself on the fight up. Yes.
All right, so I think we've gone through all the old business already because we talked about the van, we talked about MES water, we talked about the letter.
Yep.
Departments.
Nothing.
Announcements?
Uh, just Millville town cleanup, if you want to hold that up for the camera and talk about that.
Saturday, April thirteenth, be there, be square. I know it's a Saturday. Rain day is four twenty.
Got a little.
Oh, thanks for generous donation from Southwick Zoo. The first fifty participants will receive a free zoo pass.
Wow. Time to go clean up.
I know, and that's a nice prize actually, because going to the zoo is.
It's expensive.
It's a little, it's a little bit of money. Okay, any other announcements?
No, I don't.
Richard, public forum.
I have a question.
Sure, sure.
Did you make a decision on the van or you just kind of go there? I, I'm lost.
Oh, do we take the vote? We didn't.
We didn't make a vote, so we probably would have to make a change.
You were right, Judy, sorry. And we do have to take, so we have to take a formal vote, yes, because we voted last, you weren't here.
Right, we had to reverse that. Thank you so much.
Judy, if you weren't here, things would just fall apart.
Good thing I stayed awake.
I know. Okay, so, well, I'll make a motion to rescind our vote regarding the senior van on March seventh, twenty twenty-two, so the senior, the COA is no longer required to sell the van.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Richard. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Matthew?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Four to one. Thank you. We can't have all unanimous ones, Andrew, so thanks for stepping up. All right, Richard, you're on.
Okay, Richard Hurtow, eight Rondan Road. Have a bunch of things to talk about.
Great.
One of the things you talked about tonight was the possibility of selling the school or a building or something?
The MES, the MES school building. So we've had conversations about it when they talked about the feasibility study.
Okay.
Because they originally, the, if you went to the consulting meetings in like April, they, April of like twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two in that timeframe, the consultant that they had presented a two-school building solution, which would be the current middle school and then renovating of the existing high school. And so that means, so we would get the Millville Elementary School back as an asset and Blackstone would get back the complex. So it would be ours to do with what we will, but that's after the feasibility study. Now, the school committee has said, I'll just want to add this, our intention is to use the MES school building. I would prefer commitment versus intention, but we'll, we'll see how that goes.
All right, because Millville has a secret weapon at its disposal.
Is it you?
If you were to sell that building, you could include a special permit for like twenty apartments or fifteen apartments or something that wouldn't cost anything but would really enhance the purchasing power. Just food for thought if you decided to do that, because it would be a great incentive for a potential buyer and they would be responsible for the water, the septic, the, the whole thing. All right, so secret weapon that you have at your disposal. The other thing is, there was a lot of talk about an override. Probably too late to implement something like this, but within a half mile radius of my home, I know of approximately five thousand dollars worth of lost taxes that the town's not receiving because there's illegal apartments, there's a person being taxed for two buildings, they got four buildings. There, there's a lot of things that aren't being taxed properly and I don't know what it would be like throughout the town, but it would probably make a big difference because being president of the senior club, I hear from a lot of seniors that, you know, they're struggling to make ends meet now.
I know.
So to raise the tax for seniors, unless there was a clause to where anyone over sixty, you know, something to help them, but still help the town. So it's again, food for thought.
So if you can provide additional detail on that, those apartments and revenues, please give it to Peter and, and he'll have.
Well, it would be, that would be up to the discretion of the planning board. There would be a special permit granted with the building.
No, no, I mean, so you mentioned there's lost tax revenues?
Oh, the lost taxes.
Illegal apartments and things like that? If you can provide information to.
I'd rather not get into names because that's the assessor's job, but I know of two apartments within a thousand feet of my property that they took out a permit for a garage and it's really a garage with a full apartment up above or whatever. Or again, the assessors would have to look into that because I have questions like according to a, a property, a house, it goes not so much by what it was purchased for, but what the replacement cost is. And I'm assuming that goes the same for a barn or a garage or, if they keep those types of guidelines for everybody, it would probably reduce the need of an override for next year. Because this isn't an overnight fix. But there's a lot of things that, again, not taxing the people that are paying their fair share, but there are some people that have a lot of extra amenities to their property that for whatever reason, they're not being taxed for that. Because I did some research, but I wasn't going to do the entire town, because it's not my job nor.
No, it's not.
But I think it would be fair to all the taxpayers that everybody pay their fair share.
Agreed.
Okay?
Okay.
Any questions you have for me on what I, all this stuff I just put out?
No, we'll have Peter and I guess alert the planning board and bill the inspector.
No, it's, it's assessors evaluate and they try to keep track of everything that's out there, but they're only as good as the information available. And some of that information has been improved because we now use permitting software.
Yeah.
And so it really is, if people do stuff without permitting, that's really what it boils down to.
Okay.
All right, because I spoke to the assessor and I asked him, if somebody takes a permit, how long does it take for it to be reviewed? And he said approximately a year before it comes around. And on the website that shows, I think it's GPI.
Yeah, yeah, it shows the property and their.
It shows the permits that were taken and the last inspections that were taken.
Yes, yeah.
And I researched maybe a half a dozen people and this one person took out a permit in two thousand eighteen or the, took out the permit in two thousand sixteen, last inspection was nineteen and it's, that was the last inspection and it's been a, a separate residence for the past three or four years. So there's a lot of back taxes that are over the town. But again, that's up to the, the job of the assessor. Because it wouldn't take, wouldn't need a college degree to just go around, count the apartments and measure the buildings. Everybody were to be done within a year's time, you'd have the square footage of whatever buildings. Because again, I know somebody who took out a permit for a thirty by thirty, it's now thirty by sixty. And so again, it's, it's nickels and dimes, but it adds up over the years for some of our seniors that are struggling to make ends meet.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I just want to add off of that, are all the, I don't, I don't know this, so I'm just asking, are all the board of assessors, are there, all the members, are they strictly Millville residents or are they from other towns as well?
One is.
So we have two members on the board of assessors. One is our outsourced firm person, Dave Manzella, and the other one is a resident of Millville.
Okay, because I'm.
I think there's room for at least one more.
Because I think there are three. I just asked that because I'm thinking if we were to do some kind of like an audit or like investigations, that kind of stuff, like what kinds of issues would we get into? Like, well, if you have, like a person on the board that lives in Millville and they're starting to investigate, like if they investigate their own.
You want people to go by their houses?
I don't know what the bylaws.
Some of these people, I was able to go on Google Maps.
Okay.
Two buildings and you look on Google Map and there's four buildings.
Yeah.
So right on Google Map, I was able to say, boy, this, this is a lie. And again, depending on a person's last name or whatever, I'm not sure how it works, but it, that's an issue.
Okay.
Question on, again, the, the value of a building, I know it goes by replacement cost, does that also apply to like a pool, an in-ground pool? If it cost them five grand and now it costs forty grand to replace it, how does that work?
That's an insurance question, right?
Yeah, I think the replacement cost is insurance question. So if you look at real estate values and I know this because my parents have an in-ground pool and it added very little to the value of their home in terms of selling because some people don't want pools.
Right.
Right, I, I understand, but some people that have them have a five thousand dollar cost because it was put in twenty years ago and somebody else who had it put in last year paid thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So again, how does that work as far as, I know the building, it goes by replacement cost for your insurance and value of a property. So.
Okay.
You're going to check on it, right?
Put his hat on.
Thank you.
The, the one difficulty with getting accurate readings on buildings is if the assessor's allowed on the property.
Correct.
Because that's, that's where a lot of the issue could come from, so.
Okay. All right, anyone else for public forum? Sure, Jerry?
Just a question.
Sure.
I noticed that they were taking the pews out of the same vessels this week, so I was wondering.
Oh, the bells, do we want the bells?
Well, I did want to mention that only because I saw them taking the pews out, so I said, geez. Things are moving along, I guess, so.
Yeah, do we need to have that on the agenda?
Can I add something to Jerry's question? I spoke to Bob, Bill. He worked for, at the church, Friday afternoon, he'll be there at two thirty.
Ron, Ron.
Ron, all right. Friday afternoon, he'll be there and they're giving away the pews for free because whatever's not given away, they're bringing it to the dump. Because the people that are buying it don't want to keep them. So I don't know if they're six foot, twelve, twenty-four foot, I'm not sure, but if somebody wants some, I'll be there Friday afternoon to grab one or two and do what I have to.
I'm sure my husband will be there as well.
They're all being given away.
To get one?
Yes. Jen, they're giving away pews. He's like, anything, he's such a pain, he's such a pain.
Friday afternoon, two thirty.
Ronnie?
He said he'd be there.
Okay. All right, so do. Thank you, that's helpful. So that's a good announcement, actually, but in terms of the bells, do we need to have it as an agenda item to vote on it and do we want?
The question, just in, it's not on your agenda tonight, but he's raised it, but you know, the quick evaluation is what, what are you going to do with them? There's this four-foot-high thing of speakers, where are you going to put that? And then what are you going to, it's a tape of some bell.
The town hall? And if we renovate the town hall, can we put them in the new town hall? Old, new town hall?
Where?
I don't know.
Well, I don't know either, but.
Can you put them, well, can you put them in the fire station?
I don't know.
You put them at Rich's house?
Might keep me up.
But I, we, we didn't budget for anything, that, that, that I can tell you.
Okay, well, why don't we?
I'll ask Joe to go look closer. I asked him, we, we, so we've talked about it, we've had a quick evaluation, not too interesting, okay? okay? More logistically challenging for the value of the benefit, of it, if any, but I'll have him maybe go there Friday to sniff around closer and logistically figure out what would be involved of removing and then storing them until such time as they can put it, be put into a building somewhere to ring for the folks of Millville at some time managed by someone.
Okay, that sounds good.
We took the, well, the air raid sirens came down in the fight apartment, right? They stopped using those. Used to be air raid sirens, but they used to sound like four times a day.
Yeah.
You do remember that?
I remember hearing, yeah.
So let's have, let's have Joe do his inspection, and let's add it for an agenda item for next week, so then Jerry can know and inform the church.
Okay. So is there somebody he can contact at the church, too? You can send me that contact info.
Thank you, Pete.
Okay.
We still don't know who's buying it, right? Chick-fil-A, Chipotle?
Coffee shop?
Coffee shop.
It's a community center that they're using it for?
The enormous coffee shop. It'd be like four Starbucks in there. Minutes, I see none?
No.
Selectmen reports. Matthew?
I got nothing.
Richard?
Nothing really exciting.
Okay. Andrew? I got nothing. Joe? How was your first meeting, Joe?
It's going to be a learning experience, but I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, you got to take it down notch. You've been talking way too much.
I know, I'll try it for, I'll try that in two weeks, you know?
Town admin reports.
Okay, I'll circle back to, yes, there's a land court notice that was included in your thing for correspondence, that some folks had asked about. So really what we understand, it's up on Lake Street and Grove Street, and really it's just somebody trying to perfect it.
Oh, this is Todd Trotter, yeah.
Otherwise, I have another Metacomet meeting talking about Semrec merger. I'll know more on that. I have a list of things that are important for Millville to flesh out. Town clerk presented me a list today that I haven't read of people who are active in Millville on any boards or committees who have to do semi-annual ethics training and have been remiss on that. Top of the list was one of the members of the board of Selectmen. I won't name who it is. I'm also on the list because I've been a slacker, but I'm just going, so she's going to be contacting folks to remind them that they must do this online ethics training through the state.
Twice a year?
No, every two years.
Two years.
Okay? So, and the list was long, it was two pages.
Well, it couldn't be me, because I took two years to do it.
Yeah, so I, I'm, I'm two years behind, I think. On Old Town Hall, since we were talking about, just a little brief update that we had an engineer, we had an engineer who had gone in, had designed new rafters and roof replacement on the engineering for that.
Trust.
And also would come back in to check for it's done right. Light dawned on Marblehead on somebody, and I said, well, wait a minute, and is there a way to affect repairs without, that aren't that extensive? So we asked that engineer to go back in. He went in 10 days ago, came away saying, you know what? There are less intrusive ways of shoring at that building for which an engineer, professional engineer, would put a stamp on for structural integrity.